Littleton City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Schlechter.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ryden.
Here.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman.
Here.
Councilmember Valdez.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledgeable agents. All right, the council, everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda. This is a special meeting. We just have the two items on general business. Any changes? Seen no changes with objection. The agenda is approved. Just quickly, before we go into general business, I just wanted to quickly say thank you to the Littleton Police Department and the Arepa County Sheriff's Bomb Squad and South Metro Fire Rescue for addressing the situation with the pipe bomb that was at the Safeway at Broadway Minerals. So just thank you for all of them and glad everyone is safe and hope we'll figure out more in the future here. So, on to general business. We have two items tonight. The first is a motion to approve the appointment and contract for Loretta Huffine as the presiding municipal judge. So I just want to let everyone know that the city council has met several times in executive session to go through the recruitment for the new judge position, and we are excited to offer the position to Judge Huffine, who's been the deputy presiding judge in Littleton for the past few years here. So all that information is in the packet. So council, is there a motion or any discussion or questions to ask?
Mayor, I move to approve the appointment and contract of Loretta Huffine as the presiding municipal court judge for the city of Littleton.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Barr and a second from Councilmember Valdez. Any questions or comments, anyone? No? All right. Bring up this and... Ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great. And I would like to invite Judge Huffine up if she have a few words to say.
Everybody should pay attention to her.
I just wanted to thank you very much, and I plan to do the best job possible. I am following Judge Feldman, which he has big shoes to fill. I don't know the actual size, but... And he has been a wonderful teacher, so I feel like I'm ready to take on the duties. I would invite any of you, anytime you'd like to come watch court, please do. And I'll answer any questions you may have, but for now, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, on to the second item under general business is ID 22204, the Aspen Grove Review. So this is a review of a planning commission's decision from July 25, 2022. And I just want to go around, make sure that council can affirm that everyone has reviewed that meeting. So you can review it, review the information in the packet, review the appeal and all the information with that. So I just want to just go around and make sure everyone's nodding their heads yes. So great. As this is a review of that meeting, it is not a new public hearing on the item. It's not for council to opine on our opinions on the project, but to more look at the process that Planning Commission went through. And I think the city attorney is going to talk a little bit more about that for council and for public here.
Theoretically, I'm sorry. One thing that I wanted to speak to is the, you know, our... One moment, I'm sorry. Our code speaks to aggrieved parties, and an aggrieved party is... Means something in the court of law. It's not simply anyone who simply just doesn't like a decision. And so without having to go through, council, going through 100 names on a complaint, we're going to proceed tonight with the understanding that there probably is at least one or two persons that could assert standing under this appeal. And so I just wanted to put that on the record, that we're not going to go through and decide that, you know, someone who lives three miles away doesn't have standing. But when we talk about aggrieved party, it certainly does mean something in a court of law. Generally speaking, it means someone who's actually suffering a real physical harm to either their property by having, you know, a development next to them or some building. So that's generally how we've done standing. In the past, we've normally done kind of a distance. So those people within 500 feet automatically are assumed to have standing to challenge developments. When we went through the new ULUC, we actually don't have that in there right now. And I know, you know, after the review tonight, we'll spend some time kind of taking a look at this process and trying to make better sense of perhaps what makes more clarity for applicants, more clarity for perhaps those persons who didn't like a decision. So we're not left with kind of trying to sift through 100 names and ruling people out. So for the purposes of tonight, we're going to go under the understanding that there are at least some people probably contained within that complaint that would have standing to appeal this. So I apologize for the voice.
No worries. Does council have any questions for the attorney before I lay out the procedure here for what we're going to do? All right. So as I said, as this is a review of Planning Commission's decision from the hearing on July 25, 2022, no new evidence can be allowed at this. No public comment can occur, as public comment is considered testimony and thereby evidence. Additionally, no new arguments or grounds for appeal will be allowed outside what was stated in the complaint. Council will, by motion prior to the opening of the review, adopt the process, including the time limits afforded to each side. So the process we have laid out here is that the appellant's will be afforded time, as set by city council, to present their appeal for city council. A representative from the city will be afforded time, as set by city council, to present their response to the appeal and from the city representative of the Planning Commission. A representative of the property owner has due process right to also present their response to the appeal as it affects their property interests. The appellant's will have time afforded by city council to rebut anything presented in the Planning Commission's representative or property owner's responses. Then city council will be afforded time to ask questions of either party, should we have any, before we begin our deliberations. And so is everyone on council understand that process? All right. So if we can have a motion to outline that process.
Sure. I move to approve that motion, adopting the process as set forth and affording each side 10 minutes for presentation and the appellant five minutes for rebuttal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set the motion for the process there. Any comments or discussion, anyone? Yes.
To the attorney. So the 10 minutes was, I guess, when you talked to all council members, 10 minutes is what you arrived at. Is that enough time for the appellant?
That's up to the appellant. That was generally what was most consistent with city councils, 10 minutes or less from when I queried city council. So...
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I'll comment on that as well. As I think the 10 minutes was looking at the documents that provided, you know, most of the information was in there. People can kind of expand on that a little bit, but, you know, having new evidence and new things put in there, it's, yeah, hard to... And we thought that was a reasonable time for both sides to... Any questions or comments? All right. Let me open this up. So we have a motion and a second. Open it. All right.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So, that being said, we've adopted this process, and I will now call up the appellant, the representative from the appeal, to present their case.
Good evening, council. My name is Lynn Christensen. This is Linda Canufinkie, who lives in Willhurst Landing, and we want to thank you for the opportunity to present our appeal tonight. I want to go on public record and say that I'm not sure how 10 minutes was determined to present evidence, but the precedence for a citizen-initiated development plan appeal two years ago did not have any time constraints. The criteria for overturning an appeal to the Board of Adjustments is a preponderance of evidence. We have that, but cannot possibly present that in 10 minutes. The residents of Littleton dug into their pockets for the $500 appeal fee, and their voices were expected to be heard tonight. By constraining our presentation time, this gives the appearance of an attempt to suppress citizens' voices and will not go unnoticed by the voters of Littleton. We are representing the over 100 aggrieved citizens who signed the appeal and believe the Planning Commission's decision was an error. And I want to briefly go over the timeline. October 19, 2021, city council approved the new ULUC. That went in effect on October 28, 2021. July 11, 2022, Planning Commission recommended text amendment changes. July 25, 2022, Aspen Grove Master Development Plan conceptual public hearing was conducted and Planning Commission approved PC Resolution 02-2022. And on August 16, 2022, city council approved pending text amendments to the ULUC specifically two different types of master development plans, an MDP conceptual and MDP detailed. We argued that the applicable ULUC code at the time of the July 25 Planning Commission hearing was the original code that was approved in October 2021. The legal standard of the ULUC code was violated concerning the requirements of a master development plan that was in effect at the time of the Planning Commission hearing.
Can I have you pause? I will pause the camera. I'm sorry. I've got to make sure that we're recording upstairs so we have a record.
Sure. No worries.
I apologize for this delay.
If you didn't hear, the city attorney, we were concerned that it might not be broadcasting, and therefore we wanted to check that it was recording so that we have a record of the proceeding.
I almost couldn't hear you from way over here.
Technology. This is why I hate technology. Time to go. No worries. Okay. So at the 43452 mark in the public hearing video, in response to Commission Holdley's question about the code, staff member Justin Montgomery responded, quote, "I think that's probably what you guys have seen previously with our pending text that's moving forward for the ULUC." And council, we do have a video clip of that if you'd like to see it later. The opening brief is factually inaccurate, as stated on pages six through seven, that the appellant's applied the wrong legal standard. The ULUC is the legal standard for all land use decisions and processes and needs to be complied with in its entirety. Throughout the public hearing, the ULUC was referred to as the safeguard and the assurance of quality design standards, specifically chapters one and three. The legal standard of land use procedures and requirements, the ULUC, was violated. Specifically, the two proposed MDP conceptual and MDP detailed plans in section 10-9-5.7 did not yet exist at the time of the July 25 hearing. They were in the pending text, as stated by the staff member I just quoted, which had not yet been approved by city council. In other words, an MDP conceptual did not legally exist under the legal standard of the ULUC code prior to city council's approval at the ULUC draft revision amendments at the public hearing on August 16. The ULUC clearly states that council shall approve with modifications or deny a text amendment. In response to the opening brief, nowhere in the original text of the code for master development plans that was applicable at the time of the July 25 hearing does the word conceptual even exist or appear. The original text that was in effect on July 25 is on pages four through seven in your packet, if you want to verify that information. But I want to focus on page eight for a copy of the pending text amendments. If you would all turn to that, please. Page eight of your packets. So the pending text amendments are in there as well as the original text in black, and specifically included the two definitions of an MDP conceptual, which is highlighted in green, and an MDP detailed plan, highlighted in purple, which were not approved yet by city council until three weeks after the Planning Commission hearing, therefore not legally applicable at the time of the decision. The application, staff report, and PC resolution all use the words "master development plan conceptual." And if you turn back to page two in my packet, I have some examples of that. The first one is the application. The second one is the staff report that was presented at the hearing, and the last was the resolution that was approved. And I highlighted those for you. So I'm now at the top of page three in the packet. Comments throughout the public hearing were made referring to a master development conceptual plan. Mike Sutherland said, "This is a new type of application for the city. A master development plan, this is a conceptual master development plan." Justin Montgomery stated, "The applicant is requesting a master development plan conceptual." Commission Chairman Coronado asked, "This is a conceptual MDP, and as you mentioned, this is a new process for all of us to interpret. Could you briefly discuss the difference between a conceptual and detailed and how it's provided in the ULUC?" City Attorney Reed Betsyne stated, "We have two different types of MDPs. We're proceeding under the one that's technically conceptual, and both the conceptual and the descriptive one, the more technical one, both use the same criteria in this current iteration of our code." Both use the same criteria. Counsel, if you have a pencil, would you circle that last quote? It's in the middle of page three, and make sure that our city attorney addresses it tonight. So in conclusion, the legal standard of the ULUC is the binding law for all land use decisions that includes guidelines, standards, and procedures, including development applications and processes. The code concerning text amendment very clearly states that Planning Commission recommends code text amendments, and city council makes the decision after a public hearing. The decision by Planning Commission was made on pending text for one of two proposed master planned development plans, an MDP conceptual, that was not reflected in the ULUC as it existed at the time of the Planning Commission's decision on July 25, as evidenced in the original ULUC text by the admission from city staff and references to two types of plans throughout the Planning Commission hearing. The city council decision to approve two different types of master development plans, conceptual and detailed, was not approved until three weeks after the Planning Commission decision to approve the Aspen Grove MDP. The MDP conceptual plan that was approved did not legally exist at the time of the Planning Decision Hearing. Therefore, it is invalid and unenforceable. This error in itself should immediately lend itself to overturning the Planning Commission's decision. In our notice of appeal, we asked for an opportunity to provide further details. After a deep dive into the application packet, we were able to find out that because the wrong master development plan was approved, there was a lot of nonconformance to it, as well as discrepancies. And it's in the back of your packet, actually, on the last page, and Lynn is going to present that summary for you. And I have to do speed... I have to do speed master development. So the master development plan was not conformed in any way, conformed to in any way. So the applicant failed to conduct public meetings that sufficiently addressed conflict concerns and issues required by the ULUC sections 10-9-3-6 in public hearings and meetings, and the applicant failed to address scale, bulk, and height differential. The applicant omitted commercial square footage for a mixed-use project, which is very important. The applicant did not provide evidence for conformance with policies of the comprehensive plan. So that's all I have for you tonight. We've got a lot more included in this slide, but that's all I'll be talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next, I'd like to call up Brandon Ditman from Kissinger and Feldman, PC. He's representing the Planning Commission here.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Brandon Ditman. I'm from the law firm of Kissinger and Feldman. I'm appointed as special counsel to represent Planning Commission in this matter. As you've already seen in the packet, I've drafted a brief arguing why the decision of the Planning Commission should be upheld with regard to PC Resolution 022022. However, I want to spend a little time with you here tonight to kind of go over some of those reasons, explain to you why the decision was not an error and why the appeal, the appellant, should be disregarded. And this really boils down to the legal standard in this case. Section 10, 9, 3.7 of the Unified Land Use Code provides the legal standard for an appeal is error. The appellant's in this case must demonstrate that there was a clear error in Planning Commission's decision, and that that's simply not the case. And it's also important to realize that error is important because it limits the scope of city council's review in two ways. First, it means, as Mayor Schlechter already said, that the review is on the record. That was before Planning Commission at the time of its decision. No new evidence, including what may or may not have been done, that wasn't included in the public record, can be considered as part of this appeal. In addition, any sort of outside information that's not contained within the public record, whether stated by the appellant's or not, cannot be considered as part of this appeal. This appeal is solely on the record. That was before Planning Commission at the time of its decision. Second, in order to overturn the decision of the Planning Commission, the appellant's must prove, and the city council must find, clear evidence that the Planning Commission made a mistake, an error in their decision in approving PC Resolution 022022. And that is simply not the case, as I'm here to argue to you tonight. In Colorado, the courts, the Supreme Court, the Court of Appeals, all levels of courts in Colorado have interpreted what it means for a local government body to have an error in their decision. And this essentially boils down to two ways in which an error can occur. The first is that the local government body can misapply the law, that they had a mistake in applying the law, which was applicable to the decision that was before them. Despite appellant's arguments to the contrary, Planning Commission did not misapply the law. The record is extremely clear that Planning Commission applied section 10, 9, 5.7 of the ULUC as it existed on July 25, 2022. Quite literally, Chair Coronado marched through each and every one of the decision criteria contained within that code section. At no point can you point to, within the decision-making process of the Planning Commission, where a Planning Commission was relying upon the code standard which exists today, which should not exist on July 25, 2022. There was unanimous agreement by all members of Planning Commission that each and every one of the criteria that existed at the time had been met. And so the argument that Planning Commission misapplied the law or applied the law as exists today and not that existed at the time is simply not supported by the record. What appears to be the crux of appellant's argument is that city staff and Planning Commission misinterpreted section 10, 9, 5.7B of the ULLC which existed at the time, which is the submission requirements for a master development process. By allowing conceptual level designs, plans... By allowing conceptual level designs, plans, and renderings as opposed to final or detailed site plan documents, appellate argued that the standard was not met, that the law was not applied. Again, this conclusion by appellate is unsupported by the code and is unsupported by the record. According to the code which existed at the time, the purpose of the MDP process was to illustrate the nature and character of a development. The ordinary meaning of those words is that the nature and character is a general essential, the essence, the overview characteristics of a development as opposed to specifics. Nowhere do the code require specific detailed submissions or concurrent submissions of a site development plan at that time. It simply required that sufficient information be submitted to illustrate the nature and character of the development. In addition, the context of the MDP process is important to realize. The MDP process is simply the first stage in a development process for a major development. After an MDP is approved, there will be one or more site plans, building permits, additional approvals by city staff, and maybe even the city council and planning commission if it's appealed, and at no point is this the final point for review of a project. The details and specifics will come, just not at this stage of the overview. If we were to accept the appellate's argument that detailed and specific submissions were required at the time of an MDP submission, the site plan process would be rendered duplicative and essentially meaningless. It was not the intent of the city council in passing the UL, sorry, it's a terrible acronym, ULUC, to render, you know, extra stages of this process as meaningless. And so we must accept at the time, the code has existed at that time, that each piece of the process had meaning, and therefore it only made sense to interpret the MDP process as allowing for conceptual level designs and renderings. Consequently, the planning commission's interpretation, the MDP process as existed at that time as allowing conceptual level drawings and designs, was reasonable and supported by the ULUC. So the second way a local government decision can be made an error is when the decision is not supported by competent evidence. And in this case, and I don't believe appellate's have even argued, you know, can it be considered there was no competent evidence to support this decision? Colorado courts have interpreted no competent evidence to mean that the decision is so devoid of evidentiary support that can only be explained as arbitrary and capricious. In this case, as you know from watching the tape, there was almost five hours of public hearing on this. Seventy people signed up to speak, and many of them did. There were 82 pages in the public packet and hundreds more on the development activity list. And with all that, that bulk of information, planning commission had a really reasoned and well-thought decision-making process. The planning commission carefully weighed whether each of the decision criteria had been met, the decision criteria which existed at that time, and not the decision criteria which exists in the code now. The planning commission even initially questioned whether two of the decision criteria concerning design quality and massing had been met, and what I think in a really mature and well-reasoned process elicited additional testimonial and evidentiary support that each of the criteria had been met, including those two that they initially had questioned. Additionally, to further buttress this decision, the planning commission put explicit conditions of approval requiring that further assurances would be made by the developer that all criteria had been met that existed in the code at that time and not the criteria which exist today. The appropriate standard is whether competent evidence supports the decision, and I personally do not believe that you can find many decisions of Colorado boards and commissions which were as well-supported, as well-decided as that was done by the planning commission on July 25 in PC resolution 022022. The commission's careful examination of the evidentiary record is exactly the kind of competent reasoned evidence gathering required by Colorado law, and it should not be stirred by the city council here tonight as being an error. Finally, to wrap up my statements, I wanted to take a brief moment to respond to some of the arguments to the appellate. As you just heard, their contention is that staff and the planning commission applied the new code in exchange of the code that existed on July 25. And I would say that, you know, while staff may have referred to a conceptual plan, that was simply interpretation of the existing code at that time. It was a way of understanding what the requirements were under the code that existed on July 25. And as I already stated to you, those requirements was illustrating the nature and character of the development. Colorado law is clear that local governments are allowed to interpret their own codes and are given great deference in doing that. And so it was entirely reasonable for staff to interpret the requirements as showing conceptual level designs. And in no place can appellate show that the criteria that exist under the code today were a part of the decision. It simply does not exist in the record. I challenge you to go back and forth and look to see where specific code sections of the code as exists today were relied upon in coming to the decision. It simply did not exist. The code that was used was a code that existed on July 25, 2022. So in conclusion, the appellate's have not met their burden of showing that the planning commission decision approving PC resolution 022022 has been met. Consequently, the city council cannot overturn the decision of the planning commission to approve PC resolution 022022.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative from the property owner would like to speak.
I would. I hope I didn't get whatever Reed has. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I am Jessica Lizarday, legal counsel on behalf of the applicant and a senior partner at the law firm of Fairfield Inwoods. So I'm going to apologize in advance for a little bit of legalese. We've limited it. I understand this is a slightly different format. And out of respect for your time, I will not be duplicating the arguments presented by Mr. Ditman on behalf of the planning commission. You can all thank me later. But I will say that I concur with the arguments that he provided in his opening brief. So as you've, as you have heard, your determination tonight or of whether or not the planning commission exceeded its authority or abused its discretion in approving the MDP does not allow for fact-finding, and your review is essentially the same as that exercised by the district court in a rule 106. And we've said this over and over, and while whether the planning commission exceeded its authority is based exclusively on the existing record, which you know, but most importantly, it's based also on the four corners of the, of appellate's appeal which you had in front of you. And so is, just as no new evidence may be presented, no new allegations can be presented. So I'm going to focus on the four corners of the appeal. Appellants raised four allegations of error by the planning commission in the approval of the MDP, so two alleged procedural errors, which I'm going to address in just a minute, and essentially two alleged errors involving interpretation of the code. The first was that the MDP does not adequately illustrate the nature and character of the development under 10, 9, 5.7. And the second is that it fails, second error alleged was that it fails to meet the decision criteria. So Mr. Ditman has clearly outlined for you a rebuttal on that, and with regards to interpretation of the code, Mr. Ditman has explained the status of Colorado law on the planning commission's ability and the deference that they're afforded under the law to interpret their code. But I would just add that under a long line of cases, such as Berkey v. City and County of Denver, that when interpreting the code and how its language applies to 10-9-5.7, the criterion, what it means for your, and what that means for your decision here tonight is that the same rules of statutory construction, fancy legal term, for interpretation apply to municipal code as to state statute. And the law here says that you have to look at the language that the planning commission considered and quote, "give effect to the drafter's intent." In this case, the drafters were the city council, and the preamble of the ordinance that adopted the ULUC specified your very intent. The record unequivocally shows that the MDP at issue was directly aligned with the stated intent of the adoption of the ULUC. So turning back to the two allegations, then, of procedural error, the appellate's either misstate the relevant code provisions or one of their allegations is patently false. So first, the appellate's alleged that the applicant, Garrity Group, filed and then planning commission approved a master development conceptual plan. As you heard, they made much of the conceptual nature of the plan. And they did that in error because the ULUC required, and I'm going to quote their appeal, quote, "submission of a master development plan rather than a master development conceptual plan." So the key being on the conceptual or the different processes, as they stated, a process that had not yet been adopted. But the alleged procedural error is directly false, and the reason for that is the applicant, my client, submitted a master development plan. They did not submit a master conceptual development plan. The applicant's submittal is contained in the record as clearly marked master development plan, not conceptual. None of the applicant's drawings, plans, narratives, or presentations indicated they were anything other than a master development plan. And then they were judged, and planning commission stated that they were evaluated based on the criterion in the code that existed at the time under section 10, 9, 5.7 for a master development plan, not a master development plan conceptual. Somewhere the C's in there. So the appellate's second procedural allegation of error misstates the code requirements for a meeting and omits evidence to the contrary, so is contained in notes, synopsis, and other documents submitted for the planning commission record of the July 25 hearing. There were multiple neighborhood meetings, there were two neighborhood meetings that were held that met and exceeded the subsection C2B regarding neighborhood meetings. And with regards to the response and concerns, the record will reflect that not only were all, all concerns responded to, they were responded to in writing after the fact, and that documentation exists in the record of the, of the July 25 hearing. So in closing, I would simply offer that the standard that you're applying here tonight to overturn the planning commission approval is an extremely high bar. Arbitrary and capricious. Any credible evidence in the record? In fact, case law, on the federal standard for arbitrary and capricious, actually sets that threshold just over a coin flip. Now, certainly not suggesting that that should be your position, and that's not our position either. But it makes sense because in order to minimize second-guessing and preserve and rely on the really important work of fact-finding boards and commissions and lower courts, the law airs on the side of preserving those determinations, and that's why. So ultimately, you have to ask yourself, did the planning commission apply a reasonable interpretation of its code and a reasonable interpretation of your intent? And I posit absolutely the record reflects they did. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite the appellate back up to rebut anything. If you have any more.
Do you think we could have five to 10 minutes just to conserve a little bit, about three to four?
Is that fine with council? Sure. So we'll take a five-minute recess and...
What are you going to do, Tim?
Okay, five-minute recess then. Thanks.[1456.73] Okay, come back from recess here, and we'll have the response by the appellant's here.
So I want to address, again, the errors that were made in this decision and the application of the law. The law that you approved last October was the ULUC. That law, or that code, did not include a master development plan conceptual or a master development plan detailed. According to staff member Montgomery, who knew that the text was pending, he said that directly during the hearing. And it is false that the code at the time did not include that. I showed you page eight of the draft revisions in red. I showed you in purple and green. There were two pending master development plans, conceptual and detailed. If you go to page two of your packet to a copy of the resolution, the title says, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Littleton, Colorado Approving a Master Development Plan Conceptual." That was the legal binding document that put that nonexistent conceptual plan into effect. And again, it was invalid because it did not exist at the time. We showed you plenty of evidence from comments, from staff, and throughout the proceedings, especially the attorney and senior staff, that there were two plans at the time. And again, at the time of the hearing, there was not. There was simply a master development plan. So, and that is the major misapplication of the law. That is the major error that was made, that the fact that this plan conceptual, master development plan conceptual, did not exist at the time of the hearing. As a matter of fact, again, if you look at pages four through seven, that's the original text. The word "conceptual" is not even in the language. And so Planning Commission made a mistake. Mindy, do you want to say anything else?
No. All I wanted, all I wanted to say is that there is an overwhelming amount of evidence in the, that the MDP conceptual plan did not have a legal exist, did not legally exist and was invalid at the time of the PC meeting, and it is not enforceable at all, period.
Okay, and just one more thing I wanted to add. So we did provide you 15 additional pages of a preponderance of evidence that the master development plan did not comply with the code at the time, that it was pushed off to the site plan development. Unfortunately, we didn't have an opportunity to present it to you tonight. There were definitely, because of that, because the decision was made on the wrong type of plan, there were more requirements under that. There were also, again, we found many errors and discrepancies within, in a deep dive of the application material that was online that wasn't necessarily presented at that meeting, but it was applicable to this meeting. And again, did not have that opportunity to present that tonight because of the 10-minute limit, and I've already spoken to that effect. Specifically, I wanted to talk about the parking, complete parking. There was in the, and I can't find it now, I'm so sorry, I'll have to bring it up. This is in the final response dated 6/6/22. There was a recommendation during Phase One, during this redevelopment, that there was supposed to be a change in the intersection going into Linda's Development in Woolhurst at Aspen Grove Way and Bryant, and that is not included in the plan. That's just one example, and I'm out of time. I'd be happy to give you many more if you ask me during the time and question time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, counsel, now is the time, if anyone has any questions. I've had a question for the appellant's here, so rather than go sit back down, anybody have any questions?
Sure.
Yeah.
What do you hope would happen tonight? I mean, you, let's say we repeal this decision. So we go through this whole process again? Is that what you're trying to happen, trying to force?
That's a really good question. You know, the ULUC is very clear on the requirements for the approval of a development plan. And when it is not in compliance with the ULUC, that is essentially what needs to happen. Okay? There were criteria that were not adhered to because, again, it was under a different type of plan. Chapters one and three actually talk about those very specifically. Chapters one and three directly talk about the requirements for all master development plans. And there were things like parking structures and crime and those types of things. So to have the applicant reapply under a code that is met, this, this application did not meet the code at the time of its submittal, when it went to public hearing.
Are either of you attorneys?
I beg your pardon?
Are either of you attorneys?
No.
Okay.
Is that all you have, councilmember? All right. Does anybody else have a question? I have one, if no one does. Just a point of clarification with the packet of information you provided us here. Pages four, pages four through seven, is that, just for my, I think you said it, but I missed it, that was the code at the time, is the original code?
Correct. That was the code that did not contain the word "conceptual," correct.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that's what I was looking at, so, thank you. Councilmember Grove?
In your appeal summary, you addressed that the MDP fails to meet certain decision criteria as required by the ULUC, not limited to, but connectivity, nuance mitigation, complete parking, and streets, quality design, and effect on the natural environment. Can you expand just a little bit? You start, you talked a little bit about parking and connectivity, but some of the other issues that you feel were not, or that the group feels were not given, had sufficient evidence?
Okay. If you don't mind, just for a couple minutes, I want to go into my packet, or our packet, and take a look at it so that I get it, get it right.
Well, if you can tell me where it is, I can...
Yeah, well, when I find it, I will, thanks.
Point of order for the city attorney. I just want to clarify something about the process while the appellant's looking up that information. Are we allowed to consider information in this packet of materials that was just handed to us because this was not part of the original Planning Commission or city staff information that was provided to Planning Commission at the time? I just want to make sure we're on solid ground, even looking at this information.
It's a good question, councilmember Barr. I would say generally, in my review of what the packet, which consists of, you know, 30, 25 pages of additional material, it is outside of what was presented in the complaint. So, no, it generally shouldn't be considered.
So I just want to go on public record and object to that statement. All the evidence that we have in this packet, and I'm on, by the way, councilmember Grove, on page 16 at the top, is directly either comments from the Planning Commission meeting, its documents in the application. And so those, according to the attorneys, were all evidence that could be presented. And that's what we took, it is strictly off of those documents, if you take a look at them.
I would like to say that, yes, those documents that you refer to, but you have lots of conclusions, arguments, and so I would say that this is, a majority of this is not admissible. The question I asked with the actual code, I mean, that is the actual code, so those pages, you know, for that reason, were part of the record originally here. I just wanted to make sure that's what that was.
She can answer my question.
She can answer your question, but if it's not related to the actual appeal...
We have also not provided a copy of this, so our clients' interests are being put...
Yeah. Could you just provide copies to the other parties?
So, good question, but if she answers my question, however she answers it, that, that's could be considered.
We may or may not, we may or may not be able to consider it, depending on what she says.
I thought we were just advised by our city attorney that these questions and that this paperwork in general is not admissible, and we shouldn't even be talking about it.
Okay, let me talk about...
But she can answer my question.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you just state your question again?
My question is, in your original application, you said the applicant fails to meet certain decision criteria, and you mentioned connectivity, which you just addressed, nuisance mitigation, complete parking, quality design, and the effect on the natural environment. And I wanted you to expand on some of those things briefly, where you think the evidence was not there.
Certainly, thank you. Let me back up just a minute. So now I'm on page 15. Evidence C. Staff member Justin Montgomery responded, "We could ask for more details if the applicants had that available to provide." Okay? And also in F talks about conceptual phase. Again, we're talking about quality design. It goes to the next phase. And G as well, it states that this is conceptual, and we will get more details with the site plan, that applicants have stated that they will comply with the ULUC. Again, we would like to see this at the site plan stage. In this, and I'm going down the line, on June 6, 2022, final response, again, that was on the application on the website, admissible evidence, according to the attorneys. It says to the, the applicant was asked to please provide more details about how this plan will meet ULUC Chapter 1 and Chapter 3 standards. Okay? In the code, in Chapter 3, it says that the purpose of this section is to establish building and site design standards in the CM district. This development is in the CM district. That's why Chapter 3 applies to it. It says that all the development characteristics would require a hierarchy. I'm on number two. A main street. Okay? There was no main street on the application. This is a requirement from Chapter 3 that was alluded, that was mentioned, rather, in by staff member, asking for more information. Going down in that, garages are supposed to be placed in the interior blocks assessed from the side. That was not demonstrated in their master development plan. There was no parking, essentially, or garages or anything demonstrated in their plan. That...
Can I interrupt you here for a second? Because I'm going through the code that you have there, and I think you're getting to a level of detail that's not in this code here. And so I just wanted to ask, where are you seeing that in the 1095.7 that requires that level of detail?
It's not in there, Mayor, but it does say in Chapter 3 that all master development plans have to comply with Chapter 3 design guidelines. And also, again, Chapter 1 and Chapter 3 were referred to a number of different times by staff during the Planning Commission hearing. Those criteria in Chapter 3 and Chapter 1 apply to all plans, and especially master development plans.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you. What is this, page two? The E, you make mention of the pending text where the ordinance, the master plan development, did not mention conceptual. So, so I think what you're arguing is that conceptual was not in the ordinance at the time of the Planning Commission on the 25th. It wasn't until it was approved later that it was added into the ordinance, is that, I just want to understand. And I'm going to ask the, Mr. Dittman the same thing. But that's what you're containing, though, that it was never used, but yet throughout the documents that the Planning Commission were looking at, it was in there.
Yeah, and, and we gave examples, I mean, I gave more than what I stated, but there are a number of senior staff members who spoke about two different types of plans. They specifically described the conceptual and the detailed that were not in effect at the time of the text, that were approved by you on, on the 16th of August. And as I mentioned earlier, the resolution actually, which is the binding law, the binding document, says master plan development conceptual, which was one of those two that was in the pending text.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions for the appellant? I have a couple for Planning Commission's representative. I've seen none, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other question? Councilmember Valdez?
Yeah, can we go to...
Yes, please.
Yes. Cool, yeah.
Same question that I, that I just asked them, that, you know, conceptual was discussed a lot during the meeting, but yet it wasn't in the ordinance until after that. What is your position on that?
Our, our position on that is that conceptual is simply an interpretation of the code as existed at that time, which required an illustration of the nature and character of development. This was the first time that planning commission was applying this code. It was the first time that staff was applying that code that existed at that time, not the new code. And their interpretation at that time was that the level of detail that you obtained in the submissions was conceptual. And so the, the statements that the appellant's have taken really out of context are all referring to conceptual level, conceptual stage of development. It was the one stage, the master development plan stage, which become further refined through the site development plan stage later on. It was the level of detail. It was not the specific legal standard which they were reviewing the application by. As the attorney for the developer stated, all the submission requirements, all, all the submissions listed very specific on that they are a development plan, not conceptual development plan. The inclusion of the word conceptual was merely a tool to aid the planning commission at the level of detail for which they were reviewing, nothing more. And we can't really consider what the code requires now because it was not applicable at that time.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question for you. Does anyone else have a question before? Along those lines, you had the, the appeal states, you know, admits material details. Was there a requirement to submit the level of details at that point? Was there a level of requirement to submit a site plan at that, at that point in time?
At that time, there was not. You know, we can't consider the new code, but it may be different now for various things. But at that time, there was no requirement for site plan level review. And in fact, the requirements that were mentioned under parts one and part three of the ULUC, those were all things that are evaluated at the time of a site plan, not at the time of master development plan. They're entirely separate processes. And so we would disagree with the contention that chapters one and three should have been evaluated during the master development plan process.
So, so let me see if I understand it. So, the word conceptual at that time was just descriptive to describe kind of what, what's going on because it wasn't, I will say, wasn't clear that there could be just a concept, there could be a site plan, someone could come in with, you know, four different site plans. It was, was, is that kind of?
Yep. It was merely interpretation of what nature and character meant. That the requirement was to illustrate the nature and character of the development, and the interpretation of staff and subsequently the planning commission was that it was a conceptual level design. It was merely descriptor of the type of submissions which would be required.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, does counsel have any questions for Councilmember Valdez?
Again, I'm just trying to, I'm wrestling with conceptual here. So, and it is in parentheses with the, the, the report and information the planning commission had on July twenty-fifth. Conceptual wasn't always in parentheses, but often it was. And I know what a conceptual plan is, of course, but that's, and, and I think the planning commission did too, even though it wasn't official or formally into our written codes. But that, even though the planning commission wasn't, was inferring or that it is?
Again, I would just say it was an interpretation of, at that point, in the documents really of staff, to aid the planning commission in what level of design they were, would need to meet their decision criteria. I think what's really important, though, is that the decision criteria which were applied in very methodically, I might add, were those that were under the code at the time. They were not of, of the new code. And so any attempt to say that they are applying the new standard is simply, does not match up with what happened.
Any other questions before we entertain a motion? No, no questions?
No questions.
Okay. Is there a motion before we can have, we can have further discussion after motion, but we just want?
Mayor, I move to approve slash uphold the appellate, sorry. No, I'm sorry. I move to deny the appellant's appeal of planning commission's July twenty-fifth, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two decision. Is that the one? Which approved a master development plan for Aspen Grove, finding that planning commission did act appropriately based on information provided, testimony heard, and criterion considered.
Second? We have a motion by Councilmember Milment and a second by Councilmember Barr. So I would request that we go around everyone, comment to explain it for the record, and as the city attorney laid out to us, that we need to take a look at the criteria of was this decision made in error, or was there a lack of evidence for them to be able to consider it here? So, Councilmember?
Sure. You know, looking at that five hours of planning commission and from what, what I've heard tonight, I think the planning commission acted completely in the, in their, within the rules. Is this a procedural error? I don't think so. You know, I think the detailed plan, I know the detailed plan will be come down the road. Seems like we're getting ahead of ourselves. You know, call it conceptual plan, call it a detailed plan, I don't care what you call it, but this, Aspen Grove isn't approved to move forward yet. They, they still have some work to do. Right now, I agree with, with the planning commission did. It seems like we're talking more semantics than anything. And what I really, obsesses me is when, you know, somebody says no meetings were held, and then we have documentation that two public or two neighborhood meetings were held. I, I tend not to trust the people that said me, you know, told me that there were no meetings held. So, you know, I'm going to stick with, with the planning commission had said. I think they're running the money and, and I appreciate this process so, and hopefully we'll see how it plays out.
Thanks to everybody for coming tonight, and I did too watch about, what, four to five hours of that meeting on a rainy Saturday afternoon. And it was very interesting. There were a lot of really good questions, conversations that were had, a lot of misinformation, misunderstandings were cleared by staff and by the applicant as well. So I really, really appreciate that. It was definitely a long meeting, but I did watch all of it. And the, the description tonight about the master development plan, that it's, it's to illustrate the nature and the character of the development, it's an overview. That conceptual plan was an overview. And we will dive deeper into the weeds, and that's really where the code comes into play when there's a site plan that's submitted. So, you know, acting as a judge, we as council, acting as a judge essentially tonight, there's two things that we have to review and decide on. Did the planning commission misapply the law? No, they did not. Did the planning, was the decision, was the planning, planning commission's decision supported by confident, competent evidence? Absolutely. So I'm voting with planning commission's decision tonight.
Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you. Each planning commissioner stated their own reasoning for the position they took, and the vote was seven zero approving the plan. I'm not convinced that the planning commission applied the wrong legal standard. The planning commissioners appropriately applied the legal standard for approving the master development plan. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
So I find that the planning commissioners' process was thoughtful, very thorough. It was a long meeting, in addition to the materials that we all reviewed. The planning commissioners, they asked for clarity on certain criteria, and then they received it from the applicant. And then those were entered into the record. I mean, it was a little hectic, but it was entered into the record, and there was unanimity in that. So I believe the decision was not made in error, and I uphold the planning decisions, the planning commission's process.
Councilmember Grove?
After watching the tape, I thought the planning commission was very thoughtful and took this information very seriously. And I do think, however, there was a lack of evidence. At that point in time, there was requirements for content, and in my opinion, based on what was presented, that was not complete in some areas, specifically in buffering, access to Woolhurst, connectivity to light rail, location density and intensity was fine. And this is just from the content. Parking, the road under part A was not clear when it would be done. Also, parking was, the idea, the concept of wraparound parking, where the parking was in the center and the apartments were on the outside, but that was just like, oh, by the way, it wasn't included in the information. There were some questions about the streets. Open space was fine. Environment, there was no report. There was an objection by Carson Nature Center. They expect to gain some more incentives based on sustainability, but they talked about stormwater, only not some of the other things like air, vegetation, and wetlands. And the phasing of part two is clear. I'd also like to see with additional information, which was asked for but not required, was financial, a report on economic viability, a traffic study, which was done but not available, utilities, the impact. Planning commission asked for a three-D model. Again, nice to have, not absolutely necessary. What about market rate versus affordable housing? And we may have an affordable housing ordinance here, and that would probably apply to that, and that may change things. And also no discussion of view corridors, especially on the east side of Santa Fe. In terms of decision criteria, some of the evidence was robust enough, like on layout, massing, there's a lot of discussion on that. Quality of a ULUC walkability. However, when it discussed, when looking at natural resources, completion of streets and parking, effect on the natural environment, noise and crime, I feel that the evidence, phasing and crime, I feel that the evidence was not there to support the decision. So I'm not going to support this motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, I'm going to take just a few minutes. So our goal tonight here is to look at planning commission's decision criteria and how they evaluated those criteria against what was in the code at the time. And there are ten components to that code, and that is, that is the only standard that the applicant has to meet. That's layout, building form and massing, quality of design, walkability, undeveloped space, complete streets and parking, effect on natural environment, nuisance mitigation, phasing, and crime prevention. And the appellant's appeal of the commission, of the planning commission's decision did hit on two things that I also felt were weaknesses in the review of the four to five hours of that planning commission process. That was building form and massing and quality design. Now, just for the record, too, staff and council have worked to mitigate that situation by amending the code because it was felt, especially at that time, especially when we were putting that into practice, that asking for quality design and building form and massing without giving any particulars as to the necessity of things like isometric drawings or elevation profiles or anything of the like was not actually in our code and not actually required by an applicant at the time. So those ten criteria were addressed fully, oh, sorry, eight of those ten criteria, I feel, were addressed fully by the applicant and staff's contribution to the work. The only two I felt that were weaker than others were the building form and massing and quality design, which the applicant at the time, and we all reviewed those decisions, were working hard to make sure that it was understood by the planning commission what the intent of scope, scale, and design and layout was ultimately going to be for the development. In the future, we hope that other applicants moving forward take a look at all the criteria and equally support all of them. Even though there were two slightly weaker points in the argument, that doesn't necessarily mean that the planning commission had insufficient evidence in order to actually say that, yes, these meet the criteria for the MDP. Regardless of the strengths and the weaknesses of all the other points, they were, in fact, all addressed. So I do want to say that I'm going to be supporting the motion because I seconded it, but that amongst those ten criteria, they were all addressed either in the packet materials, in staff's responses, or at the time of the meeting. And I'm glad we have revised the code since to make it more clear for future applicants and make it clearer for the public in the future as well as what those criteria are and how they should be met. So that's it.
Thank you. Before I, you know, add my piece, I just want to, you know, acknowledge the, the concerns presented by the appellant's there. I think it's, it's important to hear that, and it's, you know, it's great to actually have residents involved and paying attention and, and coming to speak at council meetings because, you know, if I, if there was no one in the rooms here, it would just be us doing it, you know, in echo chambers. So I think that's important. It's good to hear these concerns. And, you know, I think the concerns are brought up by, this is a big change, this is a big change in the process in the city here. And I think that resulted in some kind of misunderstanding of what was there. You know, looking at the appeal about what the evidence that was presented, I think there was, there was tons of it. It was a long meeting, they had a whole bunch of people talk. I think there was competent evidence presented at the meeting. I think there was a lot of non-competent evidence presented, but I think the planning commission had enough evidence and had enough competent evidence to make the decision that they did and that they have the, the ability and privilege to make that we've afforded them. And, and so I think that because of this change in process with the master development plan, going from, you know, all these meetings before were rezoning, and it was a different process, a different mindset for the criteria that could be applied, the, the, the opinions that could be held by residents and planning commission to look at, what is going to be put on the property? And I think as the representative for planning commission mentioned tonight, you know, and it's very clear in the code that was there at the time about the, to illustrate the nature and character of the development, to basically allow a property owner to utilize the zoning rights that city council has afforded them and give up a different type of zoning that they had. And I believe that they went through and, and shared that character and nature of what they proposed. And I think that the applicants, the appellant's are alleging that there was errors made, and I, you know, agree with Councilmember Grove, that planning commission was very thorough. They asked, they asked questions, and, you know, going through and watching the meeting, I, you know, even though I knew how it came out because I watched it after the fact, you know, there were some of the times I thought people were going to vote no because, but, and with the way they are asking these questions and getting to the root of this, because this is the first time we did this, so trying to figure out what these criteria actually mean and, you know, what they don't mean with what they don't require, you know, with the level of detail, which previously was necessary for redevelopment, to have the level of detail, which now is not part of that first step in the process. It's still required eventually, but just not with a master development plan at the time. You know, an applicant could have come forward with multiple site plans and levels of detail but weren't required. So I don't think that they made an error in applying the criteria as thoroughly as they did. So I will be supporting this motion to deny the appellant's appeal and uphold the planning commission's decision. Counsel, does anyone have anything else to add before we vote? So we have a motion and a second to deny the appellant's appeal of planning commission's July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two decision, which approved a master development plan for Aspen Grove, finding that planning commission did act appropriately based on information provided, testimony heard, heard, and criterion considered. Counsel ready?
The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Grove voting no. The motion carries.
Thank you. Let me get my computer back up. I believe that is the end of the special meeting here. Does the city attorney or city manager have anything to add before we adjourn and go into city session?
No, Mayor.
Okay. We are adjourned from the special meeting and will reconvene in about, let's, ten minutes. We are adjourned from the special meeting and will reconvene in about, let's, 10 minutes.
All right, I'm gonna call this study session, um, what day is it, 27th September?
27th.
It's ordered at 8:06 PM. We have two topics for discussion tonight. First is a budget review follow-up, and then we are, I'll talk about the downtown mobility and streets, street scape improvement plan. So I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. On September 9th, I'm sure you recall that council conducted a five-hour or so study session on the 2023 proposed budget. That budget focused almost entirely on the city's general fund, which is the fund from which we fund most, virtually all of our operations. But it's not all that we do. We have several other key funds. So tonight, we have, have several topics to cover. We have our kind of other funds, our key other funds. Most prominent among them is our, our capital improvement plan fund. So that's the actual CIP fund itself, plus our Measure 3A sales tax capital improvement fund. We also have a couple other funds. I want to see how many times I can say the word "fund" to cover tonight. Tiffany will have an overview. We also have an update on our, just want to remind council of our ARPA allocations and those commitments. We also then want to turn to a component, it's not quite our budget, but it's very much related to our budget. It's our 2023 recommended fee schedule. So we want to start that conversation tonight, which we hope to bring to council along with the budget for your consideration for adoption within, within the next few weeks. And finally, we want to talk a little bit tonight and cover the local partnership funding program. Council did a lot of independent work first. Thank you very much. And our staff has synthesized that work and want to reflect that back to you tonight, see if there's any need for further discussion, and plan to move that forward as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to our finance director, Tiffany Hooton, for the budgets component of tonight's presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Before you tonight, we are talking about some follow-up items related to the 2023 proposed budget. And I have some folks who are going to help me kind of walk through this presentation this evening and answer any questions that you might have related to capital projects or information technology projects. So Keith Reaster and Ashley Bolton here to help walk through that. So kind of our agenda, we're going to talk about our capital improvement plan overall. There are a number of funding sources for our capital improvement fund. And so, you know, we've got this presentation this evening that's going to kind of walk us through the funds themselves, but I encourage you to think of capital improvement plan as a whole because we have grants, we have impact fees, we have conservation trust funds, we have 3A money, we have capital, building use tax, but it's really about the project itself and how are we going to fund that project and when are we going to fund it? We'll also talk about the fee schedule and local partnership funding and ARPA. So we're going to jump right into capital projects fund. This is the same information that you saw on September 9th, and it's also in your 2023 proposed budget. Reminder, capital projects fund is, we refer to it as Fund 34. It has three revenue sources, HUTF, Highway User Tax Fund, it has building use taxes, and it has the transfer in from the general fund. We have a number of items that we fund out of this. Again, I'm going to say fund as many times as you do, but we have a number of different types of projects that we fund out of the capital projects revenues. As you can see, estimated ending fund balance is $886,000 at the end of 2023. We have plans for expenditures, and we have some revenues coming in. 1.5 from HUTF, 1.5 from building, the transfer 3.4 million from the general fund related to the fire inclusion, and then a little bit of other revenues, interest, and other sorts. Types of expenditures are streets and infrastructure leases. We still have some leases that we have to pay. One of those actually is going to be paid off in 2022, so I'm really excited. I think I mentioned it before, but the museum COPs are going to be paid off this year. And we have a couple of other equipment leases. Vehicles and apparatus, this is an area we've struggled over the years in fully funding the true need of replacement for those fleet vehicles. So we do have $725,000 from this fund. I'll talk a little bit about the fleet fund, and we also have some seed money coming in from 3A for that fund as well. We have a number of technology projects that we want to fund in 2023. And then equipment, that's related to the police department and some ADA improvements that we just try to address every year as we can. And building improvements, this is the one where we've discussed that we need at least $9 million to just maintain our buildings as they are today, and we only have $375,000. Now that we have 3A, different landscape, different opportunities, and we'll kind of touch on this. So overall, for streets and infrastructure, this is the transfer from the general fund of 3.4 million. We have a number of projects that we're anticipating in 2023. Several of these have grant matching. So I don't know if you recall, but several years ago, we made a huge effort, Public Works made a huge effort to reach out and apply for a number of grants for the city. We haven't done that in the past. We were awarded a lot of grants, which was one of our struggles because we didn't have enough funding for our matches. So now we are to the point where we have funding for the matches. We are going to be moving forward with a number of these projects. And Main Street in Alamo, Prince Street Bridge, County Line, Windermere, a number of those, like I mentioned, have grant matches, street rehab, 1.36 million for street rehab, and then a number of miscellaneous projects. I will mention that the construction market is highly volatile right now. We are seeing changes in costs daily, and I think it's important for us to understand that a million dollars yesterday is not going to get us the same service or scope as it will tomorrow. And so we have to be fluid in making decisions on which projects we're able to move forward with, and we also want to ensure that we're capturing as many projects as we can, but cost is a significant factor in a number of our projects. Keith, do you want to talk about any of these projects in particular?
No, 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 why'd you do that?
150 words or less.
Horse is out of the barn now.
Yeah, exactly. You know, this is actually a great slide for me as Public Works Director. You know, next year, we were talking about this, when you include Mineral in Santa Fe and those, we're going to do $32 million in construction. And that is the equivalent of all the construction that was done on your infrastructure between 2000 and 2015. We're going to do that in a single year, and that's that investment that we've made as a community, as our citizens in, in 3A, and also our opportunity to go seek grants to support our goals. And so it's a great slide to see that. And a lot of the projects, in fact, I got an email earlier in the meeting from Councilor Driscoll about one-on-ones that's on there. So it's, it's kind of exciting to be able to knock some of those out and continue to move things forward, so we're excited about that.
Is that grant matching 2024, that 760,000, is that just for Windermere or is that for all of those bridges?
No, we, we have several projects. It's actually several projects in there in that grant match total. And today, we just got notified of two additional grants that are exciting, so.
If you take, if you take out Mineral in Santa Fe, how much? Because I like what you just said.
20, 20-plus million.
There are going to be 20 million, so, so we can go out there and tell our constituents 2023, we're going to be spending 20-plus million excluding Mineral in Santa Fe. But that's pretty, that's real impressive.
I mean, we.
That's what people have been expecting and wanting.
For the longest time, we were spending basically the HUTF money.
Right.
1.4 million in the city for, you know, that kind of investment. And so now we're going to, we're really making an opportunity to make a dent, and this is just the first year of those efforts.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
I'd like to just say, we'll be, hopefully sharpening our pencil on some of the messages here because I see even in that first line with bridges that thanks to some of that, some of the 3A money, we're going to be able to take that special tax money and attract more than double or almost double that, that same amount.
Yeah.
So I think some of that is, is a real important story that we're going to be really kind of reinforcing over the next six months and a year as we move through some of these projects. You might start hearing about, you know, traffic issues around construction.
And we'll make it like the New York State thruway, always under construction.
Yeah, we're just following this state of Colorado program.
Exactly.
But happy to, right? To a point where we can and excited that we're going to make some of these changes. I do want to mention, there is a list of projects in your pocket of some anticipated projects that we're going to be spending or working on over the next five years. And again, this is a plan, this is what we have as of today. We'll be adjusting as needed, just based on the market. Some projects, we may have to change scope or do some other changes related to them. But this is really kind of the, the individual projects that we're anticipating to be funded or entered into in the next five years or so. And we will constantly be updating this. This is going to be more than an annual process. We're going to be meeting internally very often so that we can ensure that we are keeping up to date, current, providing information to the community in a number of areas.
It's part of that, too, that project list. For the first time, a couple of years ago, we started, that list was available on the website for people to see and interact with. And as we go forward in the new website, that'll be available, and you'll be able to see maps that are associated with that, plus historical maps of what we've touched over time, so that people will be able to see where their investment is going throughout the city.
So that's the capital projects fund itself. So the 3.4 million transfer HUTF and building. So the 3.4 million transfer HUTF and building use.
I think the bottom line, Jim, is that we got to bang drums, do everything possible, let them know where the money is being spent.
Yep.
Again, a five year projection of the capital projects fund, this is in the 2023 budget document. And essentially, we're spending down as much as we can every single year in every area that we can. Okay, I'm going to move on to the 3A sales tax capital improvement fund. So I will let you know that some of this information and numbers have changed slightly from the 2023 proposed document that you have. We have made some increases in some infrastructure, street related areas, and adjusted some interest revenues as well. But again, we're getting in about 11.1 million dollars in 2023, and we anticipate spending 17.6 million of that in multiple projects. And we will talk to some of those specific projects. I mentioned 11 million dollars in revenue. This is just kind of a graph that kind of shows what we anticipate the revenues to continue at. We're about three and a half to, three to three and a half percent is what we anticipate annually. Again, we'll be watching this as the revenues do come in. So some of the expenditures, we provided some information to council about some categories that we recommend to kind of capture these projects under. And these are those categories. So if you look at in total, infrastructure, $9 million. Infrastructure, that's streets, infrastructure, bridges, grant matches related to some of those projects. So that's a number, a big number right there. That's almost half of the 20 that we were talking about, all in infrastructure. Internal services capital, so this is related to technology and the equipment fund. Facilities capital maintenance, this is related to, I mentioned, we need at least $900,000 a year to address some of our current buildings. So this is a part of that. This is over and above that 375 we have in the capital fund. We have building construction and upgrades, this is related to building two and three that we are going to be moving forward in identifying how we can replace those. Conservation and grounds, public safety and security. And then we also have overhead and personnel costs. We brought a plan to council several months ago. We're developing a policy, we're going to have some allocation method that we're going to allocate either directly or through an internal allocation. Because we have a lot of projects and so we need help managing those projects. So we'll be doing that as well. Again, I put this on here again, construction market is highly volatile, so we will have to amend and pivot as we go along with these projects.
Of course, on the building construction, that's building one and building two?
No, building two and three.
Two and three.
Two and three, I'm sorry, did I say one?
No, I said it wrong.
Some of, some of the facilities work though, is continuing work in building one to address a big issues and things like that that we have in there.
2 million, this doesn't seem like a whole lot.
No, it's for design.
Design.
This is just design, that's why it doesn't seem like.
Design and some other, some other, you know, starting, we've got to work some things in advance of that, you know, like not running all the water into the railroad.
Yeah, you said there's trade issues.
Yeah. Park enough engines there, it'll stop.
What is our anticipated cost to replace the buildings?
I feel like we, based on what I have seen, prior to the current inflation, I would probably say somewhere in the 10 to 12 range. But a lot of that will depend on just kind of what, we're also going to take a look at, for example, do we move all of the public works offices down there so that we free up more office space on this campus to help investment on this campus for us? So we're going to, we'll get, as we start in the design, we'll, we'll bring you all into that equation for discussion.
Might be just a point two to the commercial that we're scheduling a kind of first overview conversation about debt financing for October 25th. So we'll be talking about kind of the various types of financing that we could use, plus various timelines for getting to market for that financing, what it means for a couple of these large projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, again, we have a five year projection, just shows revenues going forward and some planned expected expenditures over the years. And spending it down in 2023, clearly. But, you know, reserving some future fund balances for additional projects that might come up.
Detail of that 51.
51, sorry, I'm a little too exact sometimes. So let's talk about just a few of the projects. So we just wanted to highlight a few, and again, I'm going to let Keith kind of speak to some of these projects since he is the detail one on that. And then Ashley can talk about information technology.
So the first three that are on there, facilities related, we've done all the renovations we can at Geneva Lodge without touching the exterior, because that requires historical approval. We have a current grant application out for a couple of hundred thousand to start taking that on. We, based on what we've done, we brought a firm in to help us with that, we feel like the total renovations are going to be close to 800. But we're also going to try and pursue additional funding beyond that 200 from other sources, which will button that up and address the weather tightness and the preservation of the building, is what that is. The next one on there is, we, we haven't really met with you, I've mentioned this in passing, but a lot of the infrastructure that, you know, we've gone through this process of identifying assets and seeing where we are. We're, we've been in the process of that the last couple of years on the irrigation and ground side. And we're going to start working our way towards higher levels of resource conservation and replacing most of the baling wire and duct tape that's holding the system together right now. Most of our irrigation systems out and our right of way medians are in excess, the average age is about 35 years old. So we're going to be taking that on and we're going to be coming to you with a couple of things in this area related to what that resource conservation plan looks like for water. Also, what does that forestry plan look like? And it's going to tie into those. If you, you know, I'll take a couple of examples, if you look at, say, the Bowles median, I mean, excuse me, the mineral median, that's three miles long. So we're going to have to attack that in pieces as we go, reduce, you know, some of that will become naturalized or hardscape and, you know, reduce some of that, work our way through those over time. Bowles is another example of that as we work our way through. So that's what's included in that, we'll be coming to you.
I have a question. When we looked at the medians probably a year or two ago, we probably thought of, you know, greenscape, has that kind of changed now to hardscape because of?
Well, we've been, we've been working our way through that. Part of our, our process in developing the grounds master plan is working with, working on best practices to really look at the combination of appearance and and the proper level of, you know, water resources, especially to support, you know, trees, but move away from, I mean, if you look at mineral median, you have acres and acres of grass out there. And so we'll transition that to other types of surfaces. We're currently working with Denver Botanic Gardens on a grant, since it's helping us do some design work out there related to that. It's interesting though, the transition, I'll let you all know. So Bowles Plaza, which is where you come in in downtown splits, right there. We worked with Denver Botanic Gardens to start as a demonstration location to moving over to more drought tolerant types of things. And so in that first year, it's a little different. And so some, some, some folks have come and said, when are you going to cut the weeds down out there? Like, it'll be here, it'll get there eventually. So we'll work our way through that and, and that's just going to be part of it. And then part of that is also safety, you know, putting somebody on a mower in the middle of Santa Fe is not the safest choice. And so we'll work away from some of those and get to a better position there.
Can you put signage, I mean, like, like some kind of signage that says this is a? This is intentional.
There is, there is signage. Yes, there is signage out there on that particular case. So we'll be doing that as part of it, it's much like as we get into projects for, for 3A, we're going to have signage in all those projects that let the citizens know, hey, here's your investment from what you invested in the city. So you, this is where your dollars are going.
Santa Fe and Bowles or whatever, whatever it is right there. I mean, there's a lot of accidents right there, the more signs you put up, the more bender benders we're going to have.
Not just like in the little median area or whatever.
Yeah, like smaller.
No, no, I mean, part of that's going to be, you know, it's, as we do projects, yeah, as we do projects, like for example, when we did
federal bowls, we made sure we had signage out there to let folks know that that was funded by their taper over. So we'll have signs like that along the way during projects. But, you know, as, as we make transitions and things like the, that kind of streetscaping, we're going to, we're going to have to do education, community education on that, let people know. We'll do some demonstration locations so we can get more feedback. So we'll be heading down that path.
We have no signs like the big wavy LED things.
So.
Have the wavy guy.
Well, I, yeah, I called, actually, I called DIA and I want to get their little snaking entryways.
Oh, yeah, why not? Yeah, I want the arch, I don't want the sign.
And to wing off of Keith's point too, like some of this stuff I'm working with, and you know, another project as well, who's over at Denver Botanic Gardens. And it takes time to like cultivate these projects and it takes like a year or two for things to get rooted, grounded and actually start flourishing. But once they do, it like requires almost no maintenance. So when we're talking about not putting people with mowers in the middle of the street or like having to go out there and precisely clip the plant in just the right way, that's not going to exist. And we're going to save a ton of money on O and M costs in the next 20 years. So I'm excited to save money.
I'm with you on that.
And water.
And also honor that too.
And then the third one is, we've talked before about the major mechanical systems in all our buildings. You know, all our rooftop units in this building are in excess of four decades. And we can't buy freon for them, for example, anymore. So we're working our way through those major mechanical. I'm sure you do. So.
That's got to come.
Just found something.
Yeah. I'm sure it's not. So, you know, as part of this, some of those things we're going to be working on that you'll see that are in the, in the pipeline over the next few years are. You know, the museum's just about 20 years old, it's time we really got to put our hands on those mechanical systems and, and do that. And then, you know, other things like the collections area, we need to do work in there to make sure we're, our collections are safe and solid. And, you know, similarly, we're going to be having a far more extensive discussion about the library. You know, we're going to work our way through those over time. We didn't get here overnight, so we're not going to get out of that space overnight, but we'll work our way.
And then the last one, we, we have another section for technology. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, can we go back to Geneva Lodge on that? So you mentioned, there's already $200,000 in grant money, so the city would be accountable for 500,000 of that, but you said there might be more grants available for that, like what do you envision?
We've met with state historical, we're submitting the application right now. That's part of our grant strategy is to build relationships before applications go in. So the max we can get out of that, that grant process is 200. So what we're also going to be seeking is other sources to offset our component of it, other, say, private grant sources and the like to help us, help us, you know, reduce our share of making it happen.
Is HPV a part of that discussion?
Oh, yes, yeah, okay.
I'm really struggling with sinking 500,000 dollars into renovations of Geneva Lodge when Geneva Village is 100 feet away. I think that's a little bit insensitive.
I brought the Geneva Village discussion to you and we have to make some policy choices at some point, so.
So I would want to hold off on any of that final 500,000 dollars until firm decisions are made on Geneva Village.
But they're separate.
Yeah, totally.
I know.
Yeah, but Geneva Lodge is historical. What is it, landmarkers or? It has, it's separate, I mean, it was once together, but they're separate entities.
I get that. They're really close to each other and they share a heritage.
I know, but I think we want to invest in Geneva Lodge.
I wouldn't wait.
Absolutely, absolutely. You're on the right track.
But there's more grant funding that's hopefully coming your way.
That's, we have a history of doing that. Our goal and, I mean, the, the work at Geneva Lodge is about preservation more than anything, so. But I, I hear what you're saying related to Geneva Village.
I don't like putting preservation ahead of people.
I understand.
That's one of the things that I think comes up for me.
Do lots of different things at the same time here, so I think.
I get the sentiment of like not wanting to sink a bunch of money into the renovation of a building that's not being habitated. And, but I, I would actually kind of agree that at least doing, taking advantage of that historical preservation funds for that purpose right now might be the best way to go. But to, you know, add on to that, just thinking aloud, eventually, we're going to move offices out of that watch, correct? And so are we doing things to essentially bring something up to like kind of historic preservation code? Or are we bringing it up to be up to a certain degree of standard for commercial and our city application?
Well, it, it, the interior is done to commercial standards now.
Okay.
It's the exterior is more about preservation. I mean, just to compare it to your own home, you know, you have 70 year old wood windows and things like that, and, you know, the roof, and we have some foundation issues, so it's preservation. So that's really the target for that. And part of like the comment I made earlier is, you know, we're going to have to get to a decision point, for example, where we invest our money when, because we're already out of office space.
Right, and that's kind of where I was going with that, it was like.
So do we invest in expanding this building or say we invest moving public works over and then moving other space from this building in there?
And that was kind of, well, more the direction I was headed is that like, well, happy to invest enough for the historic preservation of the structure in and of itself. But I didn't necessarily want to over invest into making it like our permanent office buildings if we're going to really invest in buildings two and three in the future.
You know, actually, a lot of the, mostly interior investment, except for, you know, some of the HVAC systems and some of the things we've had to do on the technology side were made prior to us taking the building back over.
Okay.
So we've taken advantage of that. I mean, if I had to furnish the building, I mean, you've been in the building. In fact, we purchased the furniture from the firm that left for $6,000. Now, it sounds like a lot, but if I had to furnish that space, it would have at least cost me a quarter million in a minimum to furnish that space, so.
If you wanted to match the time period too, you're really going to have to.
Exactly, I got a lot of antique shopping coming up. So, but, you know, as, as part of that, it's, it's fitting all these pieces into that long term planning for the city, whether it's this or whether it's other things. And so, you know, we're sensitive to where council wants to go and our objectives are to, you know, meet your goals over time, whatever they might be.
Jennifer was walking over here, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just trying to, I was trying to hear the conversation.
Oh, okay.
But it's like one that. Also, if I can add, I mean, so Geneva Lodge is a historic. We didn't sit here, right? So Geneva Lodge is an already designated historical landmark. So because it's our building, this is our fiduciary responsibility to fix that because it is landmarked. Geneva Village itself is not landmarked yet. We do have some documentation on historic surveys, but it is not officially landmarked at this time.
So I don't hear a lot of support for your sentiments, so.
As long as it's raised. And again, I still think it's hypocritical of us, so, but that's cool.
Won't be the first time.
Well, I think our historic heritage is very important to our city. Lots of things are important to our city.
We can move on. Okay, the last one is related to information technology and we have another section that we'll talk about that. So I'm going to just pause and just say, we're allocating $1 million related to the ERP system. And then we're transferring 750,000 into our information technology equipment fund. So 1.75 will come out of 3A, but we'll talk about those in just a second.
With the ERP, how much of that was also ARPA, wasn't a bunch of that ARPA?
It is, so I have a slide on that?
Maybe.
Okay, so here we are. So information technology, so it got a little convoluted a bit on information technology, because again, I mentioned capital improvement plan as a whole has a number of different funding sources. And so information technology is one that definitely pulls from a number of sources as well. So ERP, remind me again, I can't, enterprise resource planning. Okay, enterprise resource planning system, so this is the backbone of the city, right? This is financial, this is planning, this is community development, this is internal to employees, whole system. And so we have come to you and we have talked to you about the ERP, the ERP that we want to enter into. And we requested $3 million out of the ARPA fund. So we have $3 million out of ARPA funds dedicated to the ERP. And then I'll let Ashley talk about it, but we're asking for another million dollars related to the ERP. We also have a transfer from the 3A sales tax capital improvement fund, so the 3A money of 750,000 that we want to transfer into a new fund we've created, information technology equipment fund. And network infrastructure upgrades, cybersecurity and fiscal security and equipment are going to be spent out of that fund in 2023. So I'm going to let Ashley kind of talk about the ERP and some of these technology improvements that we're doing in 2023.
I will try to be brief. So the 3 million that we talked about back in February was prior to the RFP process that we entered into in March, that we are at the tail end of wrapping up now. And our two finalists came in roughly around $3 million, but we are seeing price increases, just like the construction side in terms of the. in terms of the consulting labor. Uh, in addition, we've recognized again the backfill that we're going to need in order to let our staff participate in the implementation of this project over the next year and a half or so. And so we're asking for that additional $1 million to really help with that backfill uh, so that we can bring in more resources to help keep the lights on while we're focusing on making sure that this project is a success. Any questions on the ERP before we jump into the additional?
So that 1 million, that 25% overage is um, what it is?
And related again more towards, I think, the extras that we'll need.
But so that's temporary because if it's, is that?
Correct.
One time, to be used, you know, to be used only if we need it.
Over the one and a half years.
As we get into this this project.
Okay.
So how do we tie this into roads and then?
Yeah, exactly. Medium. So I mean, that's not what 3A money was meant for. It was for ERP or some of this other stuff. So that's where I'm I'm struggling a little bit.
Well, I think a lot of it too also comes down to infrastructure, really now even the federal government now is including our legacy technology as part of infrastructure.
Well, I want to give the logistics, but that's not what we sold out there. We sold roads and bridges.
And the ERP was on the unfunded capital list that was published, I believe, when we were doing all of the marketing for 3A. So it always has been there. I don't know if it was the focus per se, but it always has been on the list.
Is it sort of like the background support structure for all of these projects going forward?
Particularly the budgeting and planning is going to be so huge to allow us to be able to do scenarios. And what if we decided to do this instead of that?
Such as concrete and machines.
Exactly. Exactly. And right now, most of what we're doing is really on Excel spreadsheets and it is painful.
And counsel, I would say more than this project, you know, more and more um, IT infrastructure is more or less part of our physical building infrastructure. So at some, we're going to have to encounter this um, over time. And I think this uh, ERP project is backbone to the other systems that we have. Um, so that's how I've kind of understood. That's what I've seen your development of this this uh, this 3A program. Um, and I think facilities and and technology are going to be more and more integrated as we go forward.
I I still struggle with it. I I, that was not part of the sellout there. Uh, the taxpayers, when you look at the verbiage, it didn't mention anything about technology. Um, I get it. I get we need it, but that's not where that money was designated to go. Um, so I'm I'm going to stick to my guns and say no.
So with the the million dollar there, is that above and beyond our previous discussion or are you moving some things around? How is that?
So our discussion back in February was really just for the consulting services and the software itself for the implementation. And as again, we got into conversations for the during the RFP, did reference checks, talked to other cities, counties um, who have gone through these ERPs. I think the, one of the biggest criteria that they've said why maybe they didn't have as much success as they wanted was around again, not having the resources to backfill existing pieces. So.
I get that. I'm saying, you know, the budget that was presented to us on September 9th, this million dollars, is that in addition to or is that re?
Yes, that was not, I mean.
The, so the million dollars was in the proposed budget.
Okay.
But we knew we were going to have this conversation tonight. And so that's why we're bringing it forward, just to identify.
Additional million.
No, 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 no.
This has been part of the
This is part of the ask.
Measure 3A matrix as well. If, I think the alternative, you know, to move forward with the ERP would would be to um, you know, look to the general fund, you know, you have to find it somewhere. And um, I know we've talked some over the last few weeks and at the at the retreat about the use of your fund balance. Um, this is uh, this is a one-time need. Um, that could be a source for this funding if council would like to go that uh, direction. But I do know that it has been part of the 3A discussion so far, but that can change. If that's council's direction.
So, I mean. How much are we going to spend on roads, Keith, over this next year with this 3A money?
$9 million.
So a million, then add another or take another million for? Yeah, I I agree with you, Patrick. This isn't, I I understand you have to have support staff. I mean, if if Keith needs 10 more folks and and equipment to build these roads, all of a sudden, we're talking software and technology. I I I understand the importance of it, but I just don't see it as 3A money. But that's an issue for me too.
And well, and I don't know, Keith, if you can speak to this again too about needing technology again to plan and manage all of these projects and even the reporting that we're going to have to do behind all of this to give that transparency, needing this technology in order to be able to facilitate that.
We already have money set aside for ERP. You're needing additional million for?
For the project to be successful.
Well, what was, what's the budget already for?
It was 3 million with ARPA.
Right. So you need 4 million now. Um, again, I think we're pulling from the wrong, wrong bucket. I think we owe it to our citizens to get these roads going, get these bridges done, get these. Get a lot of work done.
Keith, what would, what kind of impact would it be if, say, we didn't approve this extra, this million? How would that, how would that impact your projects going forward?
Well, I mean, you know, one of the things that's, you know, clear for us is, you know, technology is essential to execution today for us. I mean, it was only 18 months before Brent and I arrived that this organization added GIS, for example, which most partner agencies added in like 2000. So, you know, we're still in that process of investment for us. We've been able to do some technology investment in Public Works out of the utilities. But for example, you know, I I I do know that I'll just speak on Teddy's, Teddy's, I'm just confused. Too many Ts in the budget process right now. Is, you know, the process of building the budget itself is 1,000 spreadsheets. You know, and and we can't, we we're struggling right now with Public Works, for example, to answer that question, to be able to, you know, do performance measurement and a and a quality way to share that data with the citizens. So, you know, technology is essential for us to be successful and frankly, more so for a lot of the, you know, all the rest of the operations in the city. So, you know, with that, it's essential to us. At the end of the day, it's, you know.
I'm I'm just hearing, I'll just, I'll just say out for for staff, I'm I'm hearing less of a question about the ERP or about technology, but about where the funds should come from, from 3A.
How much unallocated ARPA funds do we have? Was it sewer fund?
So we only had 518,000. However, we recommended 440,000 um, in the 2023, which we will talk about.
If.
I I see your point. I want to almost go back to the ballot and what it said. But I think our citizens thought, oh, my road is done. Oh, my median is done. I mean, that's, it it's something very physical and I understand the need um, for you to make a successful project. I'm just questioning also too, like Pat, is this the right place to pull from?
Can we not pull from the sewer fund? I mean, we're we're saying the same thing, right? We're saying we need this. We need for the sewer to to track all that stuff too. So this technology is needed throughout the city. So can we not justify it?
We could potentially pull some from the sewer fund. You have to understand that we'd have to come up with an allocation method because we have to tie the amount of the amount that the system is going to be utilized for the sewer fund and maybe even the storm drainage fund. So, I mean, I'm thinking maybe just off the top of my head, maybe 75,000 of the the million. Um, I would.
If if this is a council's direction, you know, that that um, 3A is not the place to pay for technology, we would adjust, we would, you know, bring back to you the option or the solution for covering the the ERP investment. There's also that approximately, I'm seeing 550,000 that had been intended to kind of fund ongoing network infrastructure, some of these, these these costs that would have some ongoing costs. So we would have to find the other funds. We'd have to, you know, reallocate from other things that we're doing um, to make sure that we can fund the 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 technology that we need to support operations. Um, we'd also, we would come back, we would also probably have to, we would, we would revisit that measure 3A um, spreadsheet, that the matrix to, you would have a little additional funding for o- other things if you uh, gave the direction to take the the technology out. Um, and then we'd also probably come back because I believe that the IT infrastructure was one of the purposes in the 3A policy that we had discussed. So we would bring that back to you for modification as as well, just so that we can memorialize this conversation if that's council's direction. Um, to go that way. We just have to to fund fund uh, technology a different way.
I'd like to hear from Kyle Gretchen and Steve about this, though. What their thoughts are.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I want us to be so I'm I'm going to be in the the Jerry, Patrick and Pam camp, I think. I don't think it should come from 3A. I think that was pretty explicit. And even if it was kind of gently put in there, it could be used for IT purposes. I don't think that was the intent. So I think you can find it elsewhere. Or if we can't get this for $3 million, like, can we get a different quote, a different consultant? I mean, that seems really steep if we can't get enough for $3 million. And ARPA is the perfect place for it.
So, um, I guess I'm coming from a place where like, I I do see IT services and uh, our cybersecurity services throughout the building and our ability to manage projects as being part of the infrastructure of our city, just the way a brick and mortar building would be a part of a city or a street. Um, I understand that that's not necessarily like commonly viewed or shared, but um, and I don't think anyone here is arguing against having an ERP system at all. Um, but I understand where the um, the discrepancy might be, where voters might feel a certain way. I feel like I can stand there and make an argument for the fact that IT and IT base, well, there's no other word for it, infrastructure is part of infrastructure and the functioning of a city. I feel like I can make that argument to a voter, so I would feel comfortable leaving it as is. Um, that being said, I, yeah, I would be comfortable leaving it as is.
Is it a million or is it 1,550?
There's a million for the ERP and then there's 550,000 related to other technology improvements.
You're really looking to pull 1.5 million?
Correct.
Out of the 3A.
Correct.
So the point.
Yeah.
I also feel like, you know, based on Keith's razzle-dazzle presentation that we just got, that we're making, we are making those huge investments. And if it were, you know, an ERP system versus, you know, fixing a median at a certain point, I would see that like, actually, you know, we should fix that median. But I don't know if that's necessarily the trade-off we're making out of this fund either. Because there is only a certain amount of capacity that Keith's staff currently has to do the projects that he's set up to do. So that million dollars isn't necessarily ultimately going to end up being in a median or another piece of street paving either. There is only a certain amount of capacity that Public Works has to do the projects they set out.
And when the 3A was planned, what was put to the voters, it included planning and everything. It was what it was going to be going toward. And now we're kind of, it's, it just seems to me we're adding something. It's a goose that laid the golden egg. Let me get a piece of it over here.
Yeah, feels like it's on the, it's on the edge.
I don't think it was the intent of 3A.
Yeah, it feels like it's on the edge. I just feel like it falls on the okay side of the edge rather than the not okay side of the edge. But I agree, it it does stretch the meaning.
And and now we're asking voters for another uh, potential new tax. Are we going to do the same thing there? Oh, you know what? We we need some of that money or something else.
You know, those funds like art sculpture tourism.
It just doesn't smell right to me.
I'd speak out about that.
I I mean, I don't have an issue with the 3A component because like you said, I, you know, I see it as infrastructure. That's, it's what it is. It's, you know, it wasn't necessarily explicit in the ballot language, but you know, the ballot language said it didn't say only these things. And I think you can make arguments that, you know, improvements to city-owned facilities, you know, that's, you know, that would go towards the city-owned facility. I mean, the thing that I'm have more hangup on is, you know, that's, you know, hold three and also it's four. That's, that's a big jump. Well, well, no, that's, I'm talking about the ERP specifically, not the, not the 3A money, so.
I mean, is it something we could go back to what Jim mentioned and you guys come back to us and say, okay, we can do, you know, 100 grand on on sewer, can take a piece of that. You know, 3A money can take 200, 300 grand of that, you know. There's different funds that we can pull from general fund. Uh, because I, I, we all believe in it. We all, you know, it's not that we're debating not needing it. I just, you know, I'm not, I don't think I can move 1.5 million dollars and say, oh, yeah, we need that because it's part of infrastructure.
Well, speaking of needed it with the 1.5 for the ERP, you know, you made a comment, city management made a comment about, you know, if we need it, we don't know. And so if there's a way to come back to say, hey, these are, this is more explicit of what we we do know.
I think it's maybe not the right time then. Maybe we get some work done next year, 2024, probably a better time. But I know we kind of need it now in order to get those projects going. Or not going, but but to manage them better, I should say.
So I, I'm kind of hearing a consensus of to come back to us with some more, some more options. But I don't think we're saying, no, scrap the whole thing.
Right. Not 3A.
Want to jump into the others?
3A probably not.
This is all 3A, right?
These, these are. And the network infrastructure ones really are to do, again, we were talking about some of the existing wiring and the connectivity in the buildings. So that network infrastructure upgrade is to invest in some of that. Um, the cybersecurity aspect is actually adding even, we've been doing more and more with our phones, not having any security on our phones and needing to also protect the data that we're accessing here. So that was that aspect.
Is that like six factor verification?
13 factor?
We're going to have to pay 5 million bucks.
Physical, physical security. Our courthouse uh, security system right now, the cameras, door access panels is a legacy product. Uh, we upgraded our uh, museum and library, if you guys remember, using CARESAC money. We're looking to do the same for our courthouse. So that would be that aspect. Um, and equipment replacement is actually to add some additional MDTs. And cradle points are basically the uh, the kind of the Wi-Fi that our police cars have. Uh, the police are getting four additional vehicles that we need to find, wanting to actually outfit those with technology. So that would be the equipment replacement for those.
So with the the physical security, that's all just the doors at the courthouse?
And the security cameras, basically throughout the building. We, I think you guys probably are aware that we added, we're now using the basement of the courthouse as well for our scanning team as well as the actual courthouse um, floor itself and the second floor that Danielle and her team uses. So it's adding more security cameras around those and making them the, this Verkata platform that we're using that's now cloud-based. Um, and getting away from this legacy DVR technology that we have, literally, I think we get one to five tickets every single week from the courthouse for something going wrong with that system over there right now.
Same conversation.
I agree.
Can I, I just want to add a little bit. Um, so I just want to go back a few years, five years or so. When we started talking about the capital infrastructure problems that we're having here and a little bit in the funding for it. We had the same categories that we have in our fund, our capital projects fund that we were struggling with. We had repairs to buildings. We had technology upgrades, fiber network, police and police radios. And I'm reading from our FAQ on our website about 3A and why we need the funding. We also wanted to talk about safety equipment, fleet vehicles, roads, sidewalks, medians and maintenance and repairs of buildings. So I feel that the intention of 3A included technology because we were struggling with funding technology at that time and we're going to continue to struggle with it. So I just want to, I just wanted to share that, just kind of going back to where we were and where we are today. We always knew we had technology issues, just like streets, just like buildings and others. And so I just wanted to share that.
I mean, I, all these four things, I mean, are clearly, it's explicit in the ballot language that make it's an improvements to city-owned facilities, museum, library, courthouse and others. I mean, I'm, I'm fine. I think those all fall under 3A. That's, I have no issue with that.
I have no issue there.
I'm struggling with still. I'm I'm sorry. That that's all I had to say.
So, I do need to just kind of check in here. So I'm hearing a couple of different concerns or questions. I'm hearing, um, first that the, I'll check on ERP funding, a million dollars additional coming from 3A. Where do we think, they'll check. Where do we think, will check in if if I could, yea, yea, yea or nay?
Specifically to, I mean, I think that was nay on three A, you were okay, you were nay. I'm fine with three A, it was just the increase.
I'm nay.
I have nay.
I'm fine with that.
Just like a four three.
Kind of well, okay.
That was four three.
I think I I heard that we we can come back with some options then.
That seems to be.
With that, how we can do that.
It's not the project, it's it's the funding.
Otherwise, right. On the building related, the, uh, security, network, physical, uh, physical s- uh, security. How do we feel about that coming from three A? Yea or nay?
The building security coming from three A, you have an issue with upgrading the building?
We're talking about infrastructure.
No, he said, he said, if you jump down.
Physical security. I'm sorry, physical security.
Yep. Thought you only wanted to know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other?
I I I'm with Pat on that. I mean, I remember when we went from, um, point five to point seven five was like, medians were the difference. You know, things that were just maybe more nice to have, and we talked about buildings falling in from nineteen forty and all this stuff. And and I'm not saying this is not important, but.
It's a part of the building upgrades, though. It's a part of the building infrastructure.
Yeah, so it sounds like the physical security portion of it.
Yeah.
Are you not okay with, is that what you're saying?
I'm hearing two different things.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah.
Physical security.
Even the net network infrastructure upgrades.
I don't think one time in all the conversation we have created, we ever mentioned any of these things, not a single person that I can ever recall. And we had a lot of a, you know, a lot of questions.
We talked about buildings and road, you know, buildings that were falling in.
Buildings, road, median.
Ballot language clearly states.
We have it in our FAQs that we've shared over the years.
I get that, but.
I don't think that was in the key messaging.
Yep.
And I'm not sure what the ballot said.
I think for me, I'm just feeling surprised, surprised seeing it in there.
Seeing it in coming out of the three A fund or?
And and not. I mean, for that ERP that was, we talked about that in February at three million, so having to go up to four, like, that is a surprise. So I'm feeling that a little bit, but dang, it's a lot.
So let's see, on the the other, I don't know if you want to separate them out, but the 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 four things for five fifty. You're have, you are okay with the physical security part of it, if that's. Kelly?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I'm not.
With any of it or?
Any of it.
Any of it? I'm fine with all of it out of three A.
I'm okay with the small upgrades.
I'm with you.
I'm fine.
Take it out some other fun.
So that's, well, that.
So that, that's.
Either either five to two or four to three, you know, because Patrick was half and half.
Now, I, yeah.
I'm I'm hearing question about, you know, I think physical security this year in that project. Hearing a little more support, but I'm, the bigger message that I'm hearing is technology should probably come from other places than.
Well, I mean, I I'm fine with technology coming out of three A.
Did you hear that, Steve?
I mean, somewhere else.
Yeah.
Is there a?
A phone or something.
Never mind.
Yes, you're hearing right, Jim. I have your fleet on my.
You don't like the technology three A? Kelly's fine, Jerry, no, I'm fine.
Technology from three A?
Not your big purchases.
They're just generally kind of speaking.
Policy pieces.
We'll go to Pam, we'll come back.
I I wish it would come out of some other place, all of it.
I'm okay with that.
I I get the case for a lot of those, like, improvements, like the cyber, like the smaller ones that are linked to specific buildings and specific things like that. It's the bigger one that I'm struggling more with, and it's the big price tag that's attached to that.
And, I mean, yeah.
So I think policy wise, no, I don't think, I think priorities should be on the hardcore physical infrastructure. I think that's more in line with.
What you're saying, those, the four bottom ones are more physical infrastructure.
I think they're tied more to, yeah, more to like buildings, when we were talking about buildings falling on people, right? I'm most concerned about people. I think it's harder to make that case for ERP. Not that it's not important, I mean, we know we need the security piece, it's just harder to make that immediate connection, so.
Yeah, with ERP, I got the sense that you were talking about staff for that to fill in.
Correct, for the actual implementation.
Right.
Itself.
Actually, beyond your shortlist for the ERP, because I think so there's a bit of sticker shock on the million dollar over what was anticipated. But you, how many bits back did you get approximately?
I'm sorry, how many?
How many bits back did you get?
We got six.
You got six? And what was kind of the range of pricing from like low to high on?
Close to two million up to six million.
Close to two up to six and?
The two two million ones were not cloud based. They were ones where we would have to host them here, and that's where the heavy lift and us keeping this data center, which I'm hoping in the next three to five years, we're able to eliminate, that will also save us a lot of money. But that was kind of the focus in talking with Jim and where we were trying to go, that doing something cloud based, that we didn't have to have that heavy lift that we got right now. Where we were trying to go, also a big cybersecurity risk aspect of that too, us hosting it here. A lot more pressure on us in terms of trying to keep that data safe, so that was another big factor in trying to go with a cloud provider, which were the more ones in the three million dollar range.
Yeah, and I think, you know, continuing to pursue the ERP, speed is of the essence, because the longer we wait in terms of implementation, the more expensive it ultimately gets. So fronting the money now is actually saving us money two years into the implementation. I'm just saying, like, for the ERP, we we are riding that dragon, and we have to take it all the way to the end of the ride as quickly as we possibly can before it eats us. Like, it's, that was a mixed metaphor. What I was really going for is, uh, like, we ha- we are now committed to it, and it ultimately, we are just trying to outrun inflation of the cost of consulting and the expense of the service at this point.
It's always the case, though.
Yeah, but you know, the once the ERP is in place, if we drag it out three years, we ultimately end up spending another million dollars. I'm I'm hopeful, I'm saying this because I'm hoping that staff can come back to us to find that million dollars, uh, because that's kind of what the direction we're going. But I don't want to like drop it.
It's really one point five, it's not one.
Well, I'm hearing.
Census for that five point, that the the half million there.
So take that out.
Five hundred and fifty thousand, there was more than.
Is there census?
There was, yeah, five, four, at least four, and Patrick was good on physical, so that was five, so only Jerry and Pam were not for that.
Great.
I, she was fine with it.
I'm, yeah, I'm fine with the.
The bottom half.
I think it's four three.
So what I'm hearing is those, the the transfer from three A sales tax capital improvement funds, those are below it, I think council is okay with.
When does this committee that was part of the the agreement to three A, when does the committee come together?
Not till the spring.
Still a ways away.
I know, and I would bet, even though it, we don't know, that they would question that. That's my guess.
I don't know, we don't know that.
No. We'll come back.
So we'll come back with options on all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, recognize that there's different feelings about that.
All right, we'll move on to other funds, impact fees.
That's that photo Jerry likes, huh?
Oh. Oh, look, Jerry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's good for you. All right, impact fees. So we have several projects that are planned in twenty twenty three for impact fees and, uh, one of the larger ones is, uh, related to, uh, what we're referring to as a cultural, cultural connection. And so this is a project that would bring the library and museum, um, it would connect the two, and I am not the person to explain it. So I'm gonna ask Keith if he can help me here.
Uh, sure, we've been.
Or we have other folks we can.
We've been working with, um, the library and, um, the museum, Tim and Nancy, on trying to build a cultural connection between those two facilities. You know, you've got Gallup Gardens in there, it's hasn't been updated in a long time. And it's a project to make that more of a pedestrian way, to add safety across the road, and also really turn it into a a learning, nature play kind of environment, and also add a little bit of what we would kind of, we've termed as sort of conceptually like an an outdoor, like, reading amphitheater space for children's events, kind of right out by the museum down there, and it would be a combination of those things. We've also, currently Gallup Gardens is maintained by South Suburban, and we've approached them about our staff potentially taking that over to really do some enhancement with it. So that's sort of the concept right now.
What, the museum is also South Suburban, the grounds and?
No.
The lawn, because when I was out there the other day, it was Littleton was.
Part, part, it's kind of a mix out there. In fact, in this little stretch we're talking about, some of the irrigation is ours and some is theirs. So it's just kind of this mixed bag that developed over a long time. So this is part of kind of creating really an educational connection for people to have the opportunity between those, continue to build the relationship there, provide some more educational space, especially for the library in the process. But we're, that's part of, you know, part of what we want to work out is we have a few spots like that with South Suburban, we're trying to, you know, get aligned better.
Yeah, and so the project's, um, cost related to that is about one point one six million.
Don't say three A?
This is impact fees.
It's not going to affect.
And that would be infrastructure.
It was a joke, it was a joke.
You know, remember, impact fees are to address capacity, and so the library has so many pa- uh, patrons and the museum is busy as well. And so really addressing some of those, um, excess patrons that are visiting those areas. Um, a- another project that we have slated in twenty twenty three is just continual facility improvements, um, specifically to this building and maybe some of the others, again, to address capacity concerns, um, just kind of following on, um, some of those projects that we're working on here.
And you're looking to use impact fees for those?
Correct.
Oh, you had to, because impact fees are tied specifically to growth and capacity. So we have kind of a limited target, we can use those on the facility side, so.
And and that includes the increased impact fees?
Uh, we're not changing the impact fees this year, um, but we have made some estimates of impact fees. I will say in twenty twenty two, our impact fees were significantly lower than we had anticipated, so we did have to kind of look at our projects that we had slated to make some changes from last year to this year.
Why don't we do, why don't we do move some of those impact fees over to those ERP and use some of the three A funds for which you're asking for right here? So now we're talking about buildings and stuff that we.
True, however, I would say that, um, hold on, let me, let me get my thought together. Say that again?
If if we're gonna use impact fees to help improve the buildings, right, you you mentioned, or I can see using those three A funds for, to improve the buildings and take the impact fees and apply them to ERP.
So impact fees, we can't, in my opinion, we can't use impact fees for technology, because it's related to capacity and growth.
Are we getting this technology to deal with capacity? I mean, couldn't you make the argument that we're using the ERP to, uh, be more efficient with the increased capacity?
That's what we're making that argument with growth.
I mean, I'm not saying it's gonna cover the whole thing, but could it?
We'll be scrutinizing each of these funds to 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 see how we can, how we can pull, you know, I think we we talk about capacity for impact fees. I think another way to think about it is growth. It's intended to meet the growth of the community, it's it's paid by new houses and new new development for these purposes. So there may be a small portion that we can look at, we look at facilities and things like that, that could help with the.
Our old software that can handle a smaller city cannot handle a large city.
So we'll look at all of them, we'll check with lawyers and, uh, see how how much we can take.
No help there.
He's a very extended.
There's different lawyers.
I don't want him to speak anymore, it sounds awful.
I want him to go home.
And then the last one is related to County Line and Broadway. So again, those grant matches that we have, expanding County Line and Broadway, um, County Line and Broadway itself, um, so just utilizing impact fees for those grant matches, a portion of it.
When is that ever gonna be done?
What that?
I mean, that's like, like a lifelong.
We've been talking about it for several years, yes.
Which one, County Line?
Broadway got it.
So that, the major work on County Lines, actually, we're just a partner in this project, and Centennial's leading the project for us. So we continued, this is a big project. If you take the combination of us, Douglas County and Centennial, that project's twenty million dollars on County Line Road.
But when we say Broadway, I mean, that's that's not Douglas County, that's not Centennial.
So, we, I'll get, yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you more detail on it. I can get you more.
Yeah, that's, you're you're talking the hot, the entire project, not just Broadway.
Yeah, I'll pull out, I'll pull out some details and send them over to you.
So that's the majority of impact fees. Um, again, this is just a summary of the five year plans. We have, uh, five different impact fees. Six different impact fees, um, that are restricted in use, and we want to use them before we use other funds typically. We talked about the, uh, campus connection, open space. So open space is another fund, we get revenues from Rappahoe County Open Space and Jefferson County Open Space, and they're related to recreation and, uh, land. I'll let Keith talk about open space one.
Well, um, as you know, we had an open space tax task force a couple of years ago, council asked us to do, where we talked about dividing it into major buckets. Um, and we're, we're kind of sticking with that, those were sort of guidelines, but not exact. The majority of the next few years related to the open space fund, as you know, is tied to Reynolds Landing. You're actually two weeks, two, two, no, a month, like, three weeks, you're gonna have an overall presentation of the final design concept for your review and approval. So there's that. We're also, um, continuing to work with South Suburban, um, to look at their long term capital goals versus ours. And, um, part of that is they're updating their master plan, likewise, we're doing ours. And I think that's where our goal is to have that nexus come out of that for both capital and the operating agreement. So we, they've showed us recently what they would like to do for the next five years, um, and so we're matching that up against our goals, and we'll see where we get to. I can tell you a couple of things that are in there right now, our, um, work that'll come out of the Jackass Hill discussions that we've been having is in there. Um, and as well as, we've set aside money in both our budgets related to Ridgeview, while we try and solve that problem, um, whatever it's gonna be. And then, um, you know, that's where the majority of it is right now. And also, off the top, by the way, is supporting South Suburban.
Keith or Tiffany, uh, we talked about updating our master plan, and I know I've mentioned it to Jim, and the budget's pretty big and we don't have it, but it, would it come out of here?
Yeah, that's where it is coming from.
So is there, is is there money earmarked for it?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's actually in this year, so we're, yeah, we're, we've set aside money, we have grant money from, uh, Rappahoe County. In fact, we, our staff just met today on how we're redividing that RFP to make it more effective, hopefully drive the cost down a little bit and be more effective in the delivery of it, so.
When do you think that might get going?
Well, we're gonna be reaching out to consultants start tomorrow.
Oh, great.
So.
And South Suburban is sharing in the cost of that?
No.
Okay, sorry.
For our master plan.
Oh, sorry.
They had originally set aside some funding, but we felt that it was better to keep their funding separate, so that we can make sure that our plan is alignment with our goals versus the last time we did.
We have to.
Yeah, they will, yes, we're certainly in 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 discussion with them as we go, as they go through their process and ours.
Thank you.
All right, now we're on to the fee schedule.
Yay.
Usually, usually don't hear a lot of that.
So included in your packet this evening is a draft of our current fee schedule, um, resolution, and it shows all the fees that council has, um, purview over and can make changes as we go through. We change these periodically, it depends on the need, it depends on, um, statute changes, um, a number of items. So I did attach, and it's very colorful, I apologize, um, but I really wanted you to see what the current fee is, what the new fee is proposed to be, and any new fees that we might be, um, recommending. So we really have just a few areas that we're recommending changes in twenty twenty three. And really, the changes, the majority of them are either to align with market or other municipalities that are around us. Certainly, none of them are in excess of, um, uh, the service that we're providing, and, um, you know, just really kind of aligning that. So we have some building and permit updated fees, we have some engineering inspection fees, um, to include some after hours inspections. We're adding the police, um, and body worn cameras. And then, uh, we talked about it on the ninth, but we're also, uh, including changes to our sewer and storm drainage rates. So a reminder, we are recommending a five percent increase on sewer utility and a fifteen percent increase on the storm drainage. So there are a number of fees that are included in here. Uh, I didn't know if anyone had any, uh, specific questions on any of those. Uh, I didn't know if anyone had any, uh, specific questions on any of those fees.
Storm and sewer, remember you mentioned about the use, that's not this.
No, not this year. No, we're going to continue with the current fee, um, structure that we have where it's flat rate for single-family, multifamily commercials based on, uh, water usage. Um, we are not going to look at changing that until twenty twenty-four or potentially even twenty twenty-five.
We're going to have a discussion next year then?
We will, yes. Yeah. Um, we have, we have a, a process we need to go through before we can, um, really tackle that project. Um, one is we've got to get a current relevant financial system.
It's a software.
Software system for utility billing. Um, our current system is very outdated, just like our, um, financial system. And so getting a really good system that's going to help manage that new rate structure. So that's kind of the first part. Um, regardless if we're going to do a rate structure, we still need a new system. Um, and then it's really working with the just, the districts. And I know Keith and his group are working on amending some agreements with the districts. And, um, so just kind of getting all those pieces in place before we bring that forward. There's going to need to be a lot of communication on this rate structure because it's going to impact people completely differently depending on what their situation is.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with what's proposed. I think those all make a lot of sense. I think we talked about at the budget meeting, um, having some kind of program in place that we adopt that allows for folks who can't pay those bills. And that I would ask staff prepare some kind of, uh, path forward on that of what that could look like so that those folks are taken care of. On that fee schedule, there is a late fee, I believe, or insufficient funds for check and credit cards for that, which I think is pretty hefty. There's a bunch of just small ones on there that are ones that we're making proposed changes. But, you know, municipal government fees, court fees are included in that, parking fees, permit fees, sewer water, all that stuff. It adds up for our most, you know, vulnerable folks. And so what I'm wondering is, obviously I want them lowered, but I actually don't really know what the impact that's going to be to our community. So if we could maybe have you all prepare something or have a study session or something that goes into more detail of what are some of those non-development related fees? And how many do we have and what does that look like in our community? Um, you know, help us figure what would be that impact? And, and how is it affecting sort of the vulnerable people who maybe are, can't afford some of those? Um, I know I hear that a lot from like my clients, like those, even though it may seem like twenty-five dollars or thirty dollars when you don't have gas money or food, like it really, and then it adds up. And I really would want to be looking at that. We don't have to recreate the wheel. A lot of municipalities have done reviews of fees and they've, we could even use this, the work we're going to do in our equity work, we could even kind of tap it into the scope of that to look into it. And maybe that's a longer term thing. Do we have to approve the fee schedule with the budget?
No, we have to have the fee schedule in place, uh, for the first of the year and with a few weeks prior to set up systems and so that we can be charging correct fees. I think I, some of what I've heard you say is that we could kind of set a path for discussions of some of these, these fees. So I think certainly the low-income program for utility fees, one of the, I, I know there are, are several out there. One that I'm most familiar with is where, um, a municipality could choose to use the Excel low-income program called LEAP as a qualifier. Because one thing I think we do want to stay out of is qual, us doing the income qualification for programs because that's, that's a very significant task. So that's something we can explore and come back to. Um, some of the others might be lighter lifts. I mean, if you, you've, you've shared some thoughts with staff, thank you, about some of the fees that you're interested in. I think if there's a majority of council interested in lowering some of those fees, we could even, there weren't that many of them. You could list through some of them. We could bring that back for another discussion. You mentioned some court fees. Um, you know, the, the city manager's office staff today met with the, with the outgoing judge and our new judge. And we shared, you know, that there was some question about fees. They, they said that they would like to be able to comment on the impact on the courts for those, those fees because they have some processes in place that are actually statutorily required to, um, waive fees, for instance, if they're not affordable. Um, so there are some nuances to this. So all of that to say, I think I would recommend if council would like to, to consider reducing some of these fees, we could, we could schedule a, um, study session for you within the next, you know, two weeks or so. I guess that would just be one more study session, um, on some of those fees.
Can the fee schedule be amended anytime in the year?
Absolutely.
Then this doesn't have to be time sensitive.
Okay.
It can be, I want it to be really thoughtful. And like I, I remember we talked about having a business license fee as, you know, and that I noticed wasn't in here in that plan. I mean, is that still in the works? Just because we were trying, it wasn't going to be big.
Annual license.
Yeah, yeah, the annual just to help us track.
There were some recent changes at the state level, um, that limit our, our ability to charge a sales tax license for certain, um, taxpayers. And so, um, I think a lot of municipalities are rethinking the business license fee right now. So I don't know that I would recommend a fee. What I would recommend is annual renewals and a required annual renewal process.
I think that could be part of a bigger conversation. I don't want, you know, rush it in the next, you know.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be rushed, like.
We set it for early next year.
First quarter.
Yeah, that would be fine. Again, we could fold it into the equity work as well because it fits with that. Because that's what we're trying to really look at is who are our folks who are using some of these things? Another one that I flagged was the special events application fee, right? For people who want to have events, that includes the nonprofit organizations. I think we're in a time, hopefully, of post-COVID. We want people to be gathering and convening. And a seventy-five dollar fee is kind of a lot, I think, um, for, you know, big gatherings. And I understand there's reasons why that pays for services that the city does, which I actually don't really know. Um, so, yeah, I would love to have other council members support with some kind of smaller, not too long of a study session that kind of outlines this, helps us understand it better.
It'd be interesting.
Yeah, okay, we'll be doing a study session.
But not, not immediately.
Yeah, it does not need to be immediate.
Slow part of the year when we're all willing to look at numbers because I cannot pay any more library late fees. Too much money.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think I should pay for that cultural connection.
Exactly. That's how I'm funding the cultural connection.
ERP. So another thing that I just wanted to share is that I know I keep mentioning a cost of service study and we want to review our fees periodically. And we actually are intending on coming forward, um, probably the first half of twenty twenty-three to kind of talk through that cost of service study and what fees we do want to look at to make sure we're capturing the costs that we intend to capture. Um, so we could probably tie it into that if that's, um, okay, we could.
I mean, those are more based on the service, like based on the hours that's worth and stuff, which I think exists. But that is separate to then looking at the population's concern.
Good job, good job, at least since I've been on council, really just charging what it takes to cover the cost, you know? We're not looking to make it a, a profit center, uh, you know, charging these fees. So, you know, we look to cover the cost of the employee to, uh, to issue whatever they issue, you know, so. Well, state law doesn't allow us to make a profit on that. Right, okay. We, it's, it's. Yeah, just whatever. It's whatever it costs. Yeah, yeah. Probably like seventy-five bucks for an event fee, so that's to create an application.
Um, so, so we do intend bringing, um, this amended fee schedule on October eighteenth for consideration and approval, um, to be effective on January one. So if you have any questions about any of the fee changes that we've included in here, and really the largest ones, um, are sewer and storm drainage. We have a number of other fees that we are recommending change in. Uh, but the net impact to the general fund revenues is, um, not substantial or, um, or unknown potentially at this time, depending like body worn cameras. We don't know how many hours of footage people are going to want. Um, so until we start seeing that, um, we won't know what that impact could be, uh, revenue wise.
If we don't touch sewer and, uh, you said sewer and what?
Sewer and storm.
Sewer and storm. I'm just thinking about the market in general, you know, uh, for another year. You know, I wouldn't mind getting some feedback on that. We just push off to two thousand twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four. Just thinking about everything we're getting hit with, you know, inflation, just everything. It just seems like it's coming from everywhere.
You're talking about the rate structure change or fees in general?
No, the restructuring.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So just something to consider, you know, as, as we go down this road of, you know, asking or charging more for everything. You know, I get it. Tough times right now.
All right, I am going to hand it over to Sam to talk through the local partnership funding and.
It's our favorite program right now.
We have one more item after that, that'll be quick, hopefully.
All right, hi, council, Samma Fox, assistant of the city manager. Uh, just a reminder, our local partnership funding is a grant program that council has the discretion to award. We typically award these to community programs, services and events that support our citizens in ways that the city may not always be able to. Uh, we have budgeted this year eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty is a tentative. I'm going to walk us through the process here a little bit. We had our application open for one month. This was advertised in all the usual places, Littleton Report, social media. We also reached out to all past applicants. Staff has compiled all of those materials, applications, a summary sheet and a scoring sheet and provided them to council. Each council member made recommendations on a scoring sheet and returned it, which staff then compiled, and that's what we'll work through tonight. Just in overall, we had thirty-five applications received. We had thirty-four grant funding requests totaling over two hundred and sixty thousand, quite a bit more than we had budgeted for this. We had seven in-kind service requests. And we've broken things into categories, human services, community events, and our other category are familiar. Our new category, arts, culture and tourism, we wanted to highlight as things that may fall under a lodger's tax if that passes in the future and we're eligible to do grant programs there. So focusing on our grant award recommendations, every council member made award recommendations here. And staff is presenting a set of criteria consistent with past criteria for these. So if four or more councils recommended an award for the applicant, we utilized the non-average, the non-zero average of the award recommendations. We rounded them to fifty. And then we came to about a hundred and one thousand, which was over where we had budgeted. So what we looked at was that's about fifteen percent over our budget. And so we did a fifteen percent reduction across the board to those grant recommendations. And that's how we came to our eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty suite of recommendations. Does council have any questions on that?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Did you give away all the money? That's why.
So you said you gave an award if four or more, if four plus council members recommended.
Correct.
So why was two hundred and fifty, I mean, it's just five hundred bucks, but two hundred and fifty was given to one private residence and then another two fifty to another individual?
That was just a recommendation from one council.
An individual. So those last two columns that matter.
Yeah, you're looking at the wrong column.
Look at the, the far right. The far right was what it totaled up to, then you second, the, the.
Yeah.
Second one in the middle column, that was minus fifteen percent, I think it was.
Two fifty and two fifty.
So there should be a twenty twenty-three award recommendation column.
That's the yellow one right in the middle?
No, it's the last column on the right.
That was the average of nonzeros. That's not what was given.
Oh, you're looking at the yellow? Sorry.
Yellow is what.
I was looking at the wrong column.
That's what we were trying to tell you.
Gotcha. Thank you.
It's ninth or, it's getting late.
It's ninth or, it's all right.
Easy, I'm sorry.
It's getting late.
Is that what we said? You're looking at the wrong column?
Yeah, dang.
That's what we meant.
So I should point out, all of this information is attached and in the packet materials. So you can see all of that. Um, this is very consistent with the process we used last year. This is what staff recommend moving forward with. If council moves forward with this, then we will, uh, go through the budget process for formal approval and deliver these in twenty twenty-three.
So is everyone good with that process? I don't want to go through line by line because we'll be here till.
No.
It's unfair.
I'm good.
Although I don't know.
You're not, you're, you are not recognized.
That's only the second time I've been told that today.
All right.
Just so everybody knows, I mean, since I work, my day job is with All Health Network. I didn't give any direction to that area, just to. Yeah, I had zero for that. And that was under consultation with our lovely attorney. Um, I wanted to be really up and up on that conflict of interest, even though I don't have any personal gain.
Ashley, you talked to Ashley? Thanks.
He's already sick.
Thank you for doing that, Gretchen.
Yeah.
Okay, so I do want to just highlight that we had seven in-kind service award rec, or award requests and council recommended supporting all seven. So that was, that's what staff will move forward with, working with each, with each of those community partners there. And that is it for local partnership funding.
And with that, I, I had a conversation with the city manager and Samma Friday. We talked about looking at this whole process because of the other different, I, I can't remember who talked about the, this grant that the city provides and then some of the one-offs throughout the year of, you know, sponsor a table. I think we need to have a, a more thorough conversation, not tonight, kind of looking at that process to, that policy that we have.
Yes, and we certainly heard that at the budget discussion that there's some follow-up we want to do on this process.
Especially in light if, still, you know, if the lodger's tax were, were to pass, that's, there could be some overlap in the request, this process and that one. So council might want to reset the.
One of the recommendations that. That is, it was a grant process, so.
I'm not asking for a lot in terms of reporting, but if they could send pictures of what is being done, it would actually be nice to know what is happening.
I mean, reporting would be a part of that position. We don't have any reporting, do we?
In their next application, they have to say how they used their funding last year. So there is some reporting, but it's a, it's a low level.
Great.
All right, thank you.
All right, one last topic, and that's ARPA. So we just wanted to, we want to keep council up to date on what we're doing with ARPA and where we are. So twelve million, eighty-one thousand, uh, funded projects that have been approved, Littleton Village, tree repairs, fiber master plan, mobile command, historic district funding, business support and a number of other areas. That left five hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred left to be allocated. And we, um, discussed on the ninth, um, some items that we want to allocate out of ARPA, um, policy analyst, economic development, strategic plan, some re revitalization grants, um, homelessness, homelessness encampment mitigation. So that would.
Who doesn't remember us talking about that? I don't disagree with it, but I just could not remember.
Yeah, so three of them were actually, uh, policy questions. So we, um, covered the first three, um, kind of in depth on the ninth. Um, uh, and the other two were kind of smaller dollar amounts that we just wanted.
They weren't hard, they were just, yeah, we didn't talk about them because it was in, it was in the.
I was trying to rack my brain. I'd like to throw out, um, an idea for some of the remaining funds and it wouldn't take all of this. Is fixing the graffiti at Light Rail. It has gone on and on forever, and now it's getting worse. It's starting to go further down. It was kind of concentrated. We tried a variety of different things and nothing has worked. And we just may have to just kind of keep paying.
We charge the railroads a, a public RFP.
So I, I've, I'll touch on this like I've touched before. We don't have the right to just go into the railroad.
We've done it.
Every time I go into the railroad, it's a minimum, a minimum of four thousand dollars.
That's why I'm saying let's take money.
Because it's the, because it's the railroad revenue and federal law says we have to have flaggers.
If we're there for.
Flagger for the flagger.
Find them for, I mean, can we, I mean, find the rail.
We can't find the railroad, they're federally designated. So, I mean, it's, we have to have a flagger whether we're in there for two minutes or eight hours. And it's the same.
The artists are not getting a flagger when they go in there.
Yeah, so.
I understand that.
Can't we just get a flagger? I know it's expensive, but it is the entrance to our downtown. And it's just like, it, it, it says, we as a city don't care that people are having, you know, spray painting all over.
I support that. The last two times we've done it, it's been re-tagged within forty-eight hours.
Yeah. What about putting in a mural, a mural project?
Artists tend to respect other artists' work, but, uh, the museum cultural services is working on a mural program.
Well, other cities have had this problem. There's got to be a solution to this problem.
Not an easy one.
No, it isn't, but we have to try it. It looks like we aren't even trying.
Do we make cameras down there?
Yes.
You know, we are not able to see when they're doing any of this work.
We're working with PD to add security, supplemental security in that area right now.
I don't know, those funds would be, that would be a good use of those funds. Basically, it would just be burning them.
I'm in favor of just going in and doing it and let the feds come after us and say, you can't do that.
Yeah.
We'll kind of clean it up.
Court fees out, I'm going to have.
It'll either, the, the problem with that is that's Jim and I that get tagged.
I think Jerry, I've all interviewed.
We have some, we just interviewed people, you're replaceable, everybody.
Let's get back, let's get back on track with these funds here because we're.
Free meals.
We need to find solutions there and.
So I know, just, thank you.
With the, I have a question on the, this additional, uh, I know, I think I brought it up. So the, the housing and was, homelessness was on top of the million dollars that we had. So the, the housing and was, homelessness was on top of the million dollars that we had.
Correct.
Right. So, could we take that hundred thousand from that one million?
Potentially. I would probably have to reach out to the department and see if that's possible.
Because, I mean, we still have no ideas of what to do with that million right now, is there anything specific?
I don't believe there's anything specific yet, again, we still have till the end of twenty-twenty-four to allocate it and then twenty-twenty-six.
I'm just trying to, you know, with the concerns of the three A, trying to find where we could possibly, it's like, well, it's, you know, yes, it's nice having one-point-one million for housing, but if we need to.
That is definitely a possibility. And we've already got the funds appropriated, so it would really just be us tracking and just changing that, so then we would have a hundred and seventy-six thousand.
I think the same thing was the question with economic development, was with business, we have half a million with that, I can't remember exactly.
So are you suggesting not having the poly- policy analyst?
No, I'm just saying.
Or just someplace else?
Just out of the other pot of our, because this is in addition to the other.
The art of money for homelessness.
You have one million dollars already earmarked for it, this would be another one-hundred thousand for one-point-one million, hearing the idea that we can take the one-hundred thousand we, we need from the one million and have nine-hundred thousand.
I mean, good, I mean, in my mind, it says we allocate, we.
It's coming out of ARPA, it's.
Here, my million. We haven't done anything with it, oh, we're going out for another hundred thousand dollars, why don't we use the million that we've already said that for?
I should probably take a picture.
We can do that.
Unless, I mean, I'm not here.
I'll just say, some of the technology that we had talked about before is pretty important. So when we come back with, with some options, we're, we're gonna be looking at a lot of this with some recommendations on kind of alternatives and reprioritizing in, in order to get whatever council finds is most important accomplished.
Looking at the couch cushions here.
Yep.
And if we had a new RFP, we'd make all this scenario.
Nice one.
Click of the button.
Alright, so in closing, we do have ordinance on first reading scheduled for October fourth, second reading October eighteenth, which we will also bring the fee resolution at that time. And then I did mention council service study in twenty-twenty-three, but another discussion that we would like to have with council is our current use of reserves and fund balance policy. So we will get that on the calendar and bring that forward to council in twenty-twenty-three.
Questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
For Stanley.
Thank you. There you go, curveball there.
That's all good.
Figure it out.
Shell game.
Alright. It did exactly what it is.
That's a.
My analogy.
That's something you have to.
I knew where you were going.
Certainly.
When you start doing the thing, you can't stop doing.
We have, uh, one more item on the agenda, it's the mobility and streetscape improvement plan. Looks like it's a twenty-slide presentation, we got nineteen minutes.
Just wanna take a two-minute break or so while we.
No.
No, let's keep going.
Alright, wait a second, I gotta get these folks out of here.
Push them, push them.
I'm trying.
We're already first going.
I'm trying. We didn't put you again.
Chair's tucked in.
Are you gonna know that we're all city council members? Are you just gonna be like random names?
I'll figure it out.
He's a killer.
Good aerial picture.
The officers.
We might go over a little past ten, but we don't need, cause, uh, action, because we can't take action, study session, and our rules don't say, study session is a study meeting.
To go over, meeting over ten o'clock, because we just, we just agreed to it, so.
Well, we agreed to it, yeah, so we're just, let's all, everyone agree to that right now, we're gonna go forward.
Let's do it, yeah, yeah, I'm excited.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll try to be impactful here. So, get you out of here at a reasonable time, it's like twelve-thirty.
Get to it, get to it.
So, first I'd like to introduce Adrian Burden, she's our senior project manager that recently joined our team with a focus, a portion of her focus on downtown. As we've talked about, you know, we got a lot of action going on, going forward, and so that's part of what we're gonna talk about this. So what we wanted to do tonight is check in with you before we started going out, let you lay out, let you understand the game plan that we have related to the mobility and the streetscape planning downtown, the first stages and how they'll flow together, before we get an RFP on the street, kinda like we did with the open space one. To make sure that you have an understanding of where we're headed, but also we wanna make sure we didn't miss anything that you think is important, that's why we're here tonight. So Adrian's gonna go through this, kinda talk about the process and how we're gonna manage it and give you a sense and, and we'll.
Good evening, mayor, council members, I appreciate you hanging in there with me, I've already been getting my bedtime reminders, so hopefully we'll get through this pretty quickly. As Keith said, yes, we wanted to bring the high-level overview of the RFP to you and just like, you know, make sure that we've got everything captured. Tonight, we're going to cover the most recent momentum that's brought us to this point, we'll be reviewing the intention of the planning effort as well as the primary focus area. We'd like to hear from you about what your goals, your vision for this planning effort are. I'll also provide an overview of the type of consultant expertise that we're looking for, there's a lot of different dimensions that we'll be considering through this process. And then we'll be diving into the tasks that we've outlined in the RFP. And then lastly, we'll be talking about the team structure, roles and responsibilities, as well as the anticipated project schedule. So in twenty-eighteen, the Littleton Visioning Report really served as the catalyst for guiding this effort because it established that unifying vision, the core values, guiding principles, shared priorities and concerns. That same year, Denver Water approached the city to let them know about this major rehabilitation project for quite a few hundred feet of water main replacement downtown. So that was kind of the impetus back in twenty-nineteen during the planning processes for the twenty-forty comp plan, as well as the transportation master plan. Parking challenges, pedestrian improvements, access and circulation and better place making. Were all high-priority items that were identified by stakeholders. And in twenty-twenty-one, the ballot issue three A was approved by Littleton voters, and that provided an additional funding source for future capital improvement projects. And city council also approved the funding for the feasibility study to identify potential downtown organization that could provide additional funding, governance and consensus. So, and that brings us to twenty-twenty-two, downtown was identified as goal four. There was, there's an upcoming ballot issue for the Littleton Downtown Development Authority, and then this RFP, we're planning to advertise next month, pretty soon.
Adrian, is this just for Main Street or is it also, it's just Main Street?
We'll get you, you got a nice format coming in.
Oh, sorry, jumping ahead.
So that brings us to, basically, we have the vision, the community sort, support, the funding and the personnel, and we're ready to hit the ground running now with the plan.
Maybe Ashley can buy a program that'll let you have the words on one sentence.
No, we like those maybe guesses, we like the energy.
Yeah, it's weird, some of it's.
Some of us held back for making a call.
Yeah.
That's great, like things got squeezed.
Alright, so.
We're doing great. No longer that.
Continue, Dave.
Sorry.
So this planning effort will result in a long-term guide for mobility, pedestrian safety, streetscape, wayfinding and green infrastructure improvements. We'll also be looking at policies, programs and strategies for downtown Littleton. We're building upon the great work that's already occurred, but we're doing this to enhance the unique character and heritage of downtown Littleton. This plan will also allow for strategic prioritization and implementation of improvements while balancing historic preservation, the economic vitality of our downtown, fiscal constraints, current technological trends, green infrastructure and place-making urban design approach to really enhance that visitor's experience. So to your question, the planned focus area, it's consistent right now with what was identified through the DDA planning process. We're gonna be looking a lot at the downtown core primarily and those gateway connections and thinking about the threshold as people are entering downtown. But we'll be considering the greater connectivity and context for the surrounding vicinity to make sure that it really ties in and in grounds the plan. So Keith was gonna take this part, but we wanted to give you guys the opportunity to comment on, you know, your interests, your goals, your vision for this planning effort and some, some things to consider.
So like.
I'm gonna take a break.
That's a pause, so basically, our question for you is, is when we, when we get through this planning process and we're going forward from there related to streetscape or whatever, what is, what are the two, one or two most important things for council to make sure that we get out of this process? Because what we're gonna do here is this work will set the foundation for the next probably two to three decades.
I'll start since everyone else is quiet. One thing I wanna see is, you know, with the, at least the focus on Main Street, options and, you know, different alternatives of what, you know, what is it? Is it one lane with diagonal parking, is it two lane, what, I mean, just see different options with what makes sense, kind of real life examples in other communities. Just to see what are the pros and cons of that. And that being said, also not just the sole focus on just Main Street, obviously that's, they think I wanna see how, let's take the vision, look at the whole downtown area, and what, what are we missing, what could be done on the streetscape elsewhere that connects, make sure this is what I wanna see.
I, I'd like to see it extended a little bit, all the way to Littleton, Littleton Boulevard to Broadway, to some degree, not the same focus as downtown, of course. But it's a feeder to downtown, and I always, you can hear me talk about an arch for years and years, and, you know, something that, that effect that says it's this way to downtown. If, if we're putting it all here, you know, I, I think we should just expand it a piece, just so we can get people over. Because we're already doing that on both Santa Fe, but we're not doing that on Littleton Boulevard.
No, we do, in the, in the work plan for us, we have a corridor study specific to Littleton Boulevard in the next, in the next few years scheduled already. Because we really wanna look at, just for that, we wanna look at the historical issue along that corridor, plus the pedestrian stuff. I'm not sure we wanna expand that, but we, we can talk about that.
I was just, just kinda too, I think as you hear about, as we talk about the gateway analysis, I think that might help address some of your interest there with Littleton Boulevard as we're getting kind of, you know, if you're, you're coming west there. The, the transition there and kind of extending a little bit, does that meet that, meet some of the interests?
Well, I'm thinking of an attention getter if you're on Broadway, you know, that, that keeps saying that, like, like I said, big arch, something says it's this way, something's that way, I wanna go that way.
Wayfinding is another larger, yeah. I, I think that could.
Yeah, we, we definitely, wayfinding to that core area will be part of that.
Well, I, I get you had said, uh, Littleton Corridor Study, why don't you pull out the other four or five that we've done in the past and just use those? I mean, we have corridor studies after corridor studies and we, we don't act on them.
Well.
Why don't we just do something instead of doing a study?
We've talked about the fact that, I, I've talked to you about the fact that council's never adopted any of those plans. So I don't really have, I don't really have an adoptive plan to work from, and what, the other part of that is that, you know.
And, and I'll stop you there, you're right, council didn't adopt them because they were worth less than what we paid for.
Well, we don't wanna use those then.
And we spent, so, well, but we're gonna do another, yeah, we're gonna do another one that'll probably be filed away, why don't we just do something?
Times have changed, though, when was the last corridor study?
The last one we did nothing with, why don't we just do something, why don't we act instead of.
I will, as a follow-up to this discussion, I will follow up with council through Jim. I'll show you what we've done related to past corridor studies on Littleton Boulevard and the age of those, and we can discuss that.
And I'm talking going forward, why don't we just do something?
I don't have any plans or designs to do something.
I would love to see what those historic ones look like, though, because like, I have no, to your point, Jerry, like, I have no idea what y'all, what past councils have even considered and then ultimately rejected because they were crap. We didn't have rejected, alls we did is a study that says, what do we have on Littleton Boulevard?
Why, why didn't you act on?
What's that?
Why didn't you act on?
Typically, no money.
There was, yeah, it was, it was just a study that we spent a lot of money on time after time, and, and I, I guess I'm, I'm just so burned out on studies, I'd rather see action.
He, I still have to pay for designing, that's.
I will say, I agree with Jerry, something about Littleton Boulevard, I don't think this is the place for it.
I, I think it is a place, you gotta include it in there at some point.
With that in mind.
And I think Jim did say that.
Yeah, I think we're there. We, we've heard that interest and we'll make sure that as we, we, the, the wayfinding, the gateways, that there's connection there, and I think it might, it might involve, I'm hearing some, some interest in seeing what was the last Littleton Boulevard corridor study and seeing how some of that can be, you know, built in.
Cool, thanks.
Are you gonna talk?
No, I agree with, I mean, I agree with Kyle, like, I'm really interested in seeing different permutations of what Main Street could be like, you know. A pedestrian-only street is, oh, that would just be fantastic, but I don't know if that's a realistic, you know. If it's a realistic option going forward, but it's something to, to consider.
Last week detour past your house.
Yeah, it's fine, everybody else is going pedestrian now, so it's fine.
I mean, there are options where even the entirety of Main Street doesn't necessarily have to be closed, but there could even be a corridor or a block of it that ultimately gets just set aside for, you know.
You just have to work with.
Pedestrian access.
Fireway.
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of, a lot of downtowns have done that, eh, you know, you have commercial interests that have a set hours early and late to do deliveries, drop-offs, maintenance, all that kinda stuff. So I mean, I think we should reach big and see what the possibility of, of, you know, at least cut, closing down traffic to some of it, because yeah, it detracts from the experience of being downtown.
And, uh, you know, if this DDA passes and, um, which I hope that it does, and the ideas and creativity starts pouring in, we have some incredible alleys that are being underutilized. Those alleys are fantastic. And so, taking that into account, thinking about that going forward too, as well, I know you know that, anyway, that's what I got.
I think that's.
Everything else looks great, though. One thing that's missing, and when I was on HPP years ago, we did a study on alleys and looked to, Fort Collins has, I guess, a lot of alley art and it, it helps with safety, not only the character and usage in, in terms of using tools to enhance downtown.
And did we act on those studies? Go ahead.
Why not? Part of it.
Yeah, Keith, I wanna see lots of lighting and I wanna see lots of spaces for convening. Whether that's umbrellas, whether that's places people can go and sit.
Pocket parks.
Yeah, kinda, that's important to me that we get spaces for gathering.
I'd like to see all the overhead wires buried on, on the street.
Oh, God, yes.
I'd like to see this, the sidewalks, I'd like to see it cleaned up, I feel like when you look down Main Street, say from the courthouse, it just looks so busy with some of its silver red wire, some of it's a sandwich board, some of it's the wayfinding signs, some of it's the, whatever, it's just so busy. I, I'd like, definitely like to see the trees trimmed up and, or completely replaced if they're completely gone.
I think that's good, probably.
And, you know, and certainly in the grates where there is nothing in there, I'd like to see those cemented over or a new tree placed in there, I'd like to see the sidewalks a little bit wider.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, the sidewalks, I think, pedestrian and bicycle focused to, to take a look at that, how we can do those.
Okay, thanks.
You asked.
Thank you.
Because I think, yeah.
We can keep going.
I mean, I think we've had a study on, on this, you can probably go back and see all the recommendations that, I can swear we've done some town halls on this, haven't we?
Correct, there's been, so, as an example though.
There's gonna be pages of, of ideas.
There's, there's plenty of ideas, but there's no actual design work. So I can sit here and tell you, it's gonna cost you eleven million dollars, and that's the stage that we have to go through.
Sure.
You know, and all the things that you mentioned, like just looking at this picture, for example. You know, you would never, like, the, the top left of the picture, that's an obstacle course, none of the trees are lined up, you know, those kinda things. And that's stuff that you wouldn't do in today's design, but the design you have down there is twenty-five years old, realistically speaking. And so, you know, that's part of the modernization of the effort is to, to bring those things in. I mean, the holiday lights are actually charged from the overhead lights, I would say that, because we don't wanna burn the trees down, but, you know, so.
I like that you're thinking ahead like forty, fifty years from now and not, you know, ten years from now.
A little too late.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna.
Thinking now, think way ahead.
We usually had a, we usually go through our files and we had some pictures from the early seventies and eighties when the concrete pillars were down there.
This is so awesome.
Yeah, so, you know, in those, you know, that's, that, that set the stage for decades, you know, so this is, this is what we gotta be doing.
That was it.
Is there money for all this?
Right now, what we've, what we've talked about is, so for this design work, yes, we've set aside a budget, and part of that, that discussion. Right now, what we, what we've talked about is, so for this design work, yes, we've set aside the budget and part of that, that discussion.
But not just with the design, for like actually execution of whatever the design might be.
So, so what we've talked about with that deployment of the three A funds related to debt services for a couple of these big projects like this.
That's one of the large projects that could be a candidate for some debt financing, move along and get it going.
Well, thank you. That was really helpful and we'll have many, many more opportunities to continue talking about that. So because of the, the breadth of the scope here, we'll be looking at um multiple expertises as part of this planning effort. Transportation planning will definitely be a big component, traffic and transportation engineering, civil engineering, curbside and parking, urban design, landscape architecture, wayfinding, historic preservation, and then public outreach and facilitation is really going to be a major effort here. So to get into the breakdown of the tasks that we've outlined in the RFP, task one is project management. That's your day to day project administration in collaboration with myself. Communications and outreach. We fully expect this to be a really robust public engagement approach that capitalizes on in person and virtual forums to meaningfully engage a wide audience of stakeholders. Task three is the existing conditions analysis. So we will be going into those, those older planning studies. What's gotten us here, looking at our current guiding principles and developing a data book to really understand the current state. Then we will get into the visioning process and that's where we will have our first major public outreach efforts. And that's where we'll start to discuss those high level trade offs. Is it increasing the size of the sidewalk to accommodate more people and then reducing a travel or losing a travel lane? Or is the traffic component going to trump that piece? And so it's going to be starting to have a lot of those tougher conversations and then identifying what rises to the top. Next, we'll be getting into the design concept, alternatives and analysis. So we're looking at three potential design concepts uh for consideration and those will be presented through a public process. Um, and then we'll be analyzing those and in selecting a preferred concept and going from there for capital improvements. And that will be primarily focused on Main Street Alamo, really aligned with those Denver Water rehab, the, the areas for the rehabilitation project. But we will have some higher level recommendations that are outside of that scope. And again, that connectivity is going to be really important in the context and grounding of all of these improvements with the greater area downtown. The next component will be streetscape materials, palette and green infrastructure toolbox. So through those conversations of the design concepts, we'll be starting to look at a general design language for any kind of street components, benches, lighting, what that palette of materials looks like. So we're consistent and you, you understand your downtown and there's something special and unique about it and it really speaks to the character of what's there and what we want it to be. And then with green infrastructure, looking at the trees, um, other ways that we can bring in stormwater quality kind of components that are designed into the spaces that really contribute to that place making feel, you know? You always hear about landscaping and green and bringing that in, and that's a really important component of getting people to sit and stay and rest in the area. And the last piece will be the implementation plan. So that's where we'll compile all of our recommendations and summarize the planning process into a final report. This will include our phased implementation plan that'll have a, a, a matrix of prioritized capital improvement projects to help us really guide through how we respond to the Denver Water project and other things going on. We want to make sure those are aligned with our city and project goals and objectives. There's going to be some policy recommendations in there. We'll have rough order magnitude cost estimates, uh, and then we'll start to identify some potential funding sources and strategies. Um, and then all of supporting graphics and narrative information that was produced in the planning process. So the team structure, um, project management team will really be myself and then the project manager for the consultant team will be doing the day to day, the, the emails and the project administration, making sure we're staying on schedule. We will have our technical working group and that will, sorry. So we'll have our technical working group. This team will really be comprised of individuals from various city departments. And this team will be confirming our project management plan, communication probably, uh, protocol. Basically, any materials that are going out for review, they will be that first level of review. Next, then we have the stakeholder working group. Um, these are our project ambassadors. They're going to really help us message this information and they'll also have another level of review before anything's going to that public level. And then city council, you guys will be very engaged throughout this process. You're confirming these planned vision, goals and objectives and hopefully at the end adopting this plan. So from a schedule standpoint, um, we're here nine twenty seven. We are hoping to advertise this in the next few weeks and go through interview contracting and then kick off in early Q one of next year. The existing conditions piece will take place in Q one, Q two. That's when we'll have our first checkpoint with you. We'll review our existing conditions. We'll go into visioning and that, like I said earlier, that's where we'll really have our first public engagement outreach effort. And this, as I've said multiple times, very robust, but we're looking for very creative methods. We don't want to go with a standard public forum. We want to utilize as many opportunities as we can to engage the public. Again, that wide reaching audience is what we're going for here. So basically, we'll be checking in with you guys at every stage of the process to give you the opportunity to review and, and provide feedback. And we're anticipating this is going to be about a twelve month process and then hopefully moving into design from there.
Where's Denver Water fitting that? Do you have that somewhere in there?
So Denver Water, they are going to be a member of the technical working group and so they'll be a part of the review of all of our technical documents. And we're working closely with them to make sure our schedules align and just in terms of that communication and just being very transparent with what our process looks like to make sure our process has integrity and that's informing their design and their efforts as well. And we're collaborating and capitalizing on those investments, you know?
Do we have any more clarity on when they plan?
Right now, the plan is twenty twenty five. So that gives us time to get through our planning process, go through design and then align as best as possible.
Keith always says unless.
Unless.
Right.
These don't overuse the water line downtown.
Uh, it'll probably break tomorrow.
It's only abandoned woodline. It's fine.
Yeah. Maybe we'll find a dinosaur or something.
Be a vision down.
It's a water park.
Oh, that's right.
Good job, Kate. Questions?
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it. I look forward to working with you all on this, so.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome on that one.
Yeah, thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Thanks for staying up past your bedtime.
Yes, I know, yeah.
Hey, you can have the one red umbrella.
I feel like travelers in church. It's so cool to find a water.
Alright, uh, city manager, do you have any updates?
Looking serious, I would pass tonight, but I will just, I'm just mentioned I've been in close contact today with the police departments. There's comments uh from the DIA's about working with uh, county. It appears that, you know, it was a likely explosive device. And so I know they are, we've had contact with some of our, our federal partners. Police department has a meeting tomorrow to kind of talk about next steps with those, those partners in terms of getting their, their best help so that we can figure out, you know, get the evidence that uh we can from the device. And I know the police are also really working with other property owners in the area regarding potential video. So no real, nothing conclusive, but it's, you know, it is pretty one right now that.
They know if it was more of a prank or if it actually is, I mean, it could look like something, but they go to explode and nothing happens.
It was, yeah, it was uh likely a real device.
What's wrong with the people? If you're watching, what the hell's wrong with you?
There it is. There it is.
Any voiceless city attorney have anything to say?
You can hear him anyway.
Get better.
Alright, with that, cool.